Stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Next would be the oath of offices for Aaron Magrum and Dan Maturi.
I have your oath and your pen with yourself.
Can you do that? Do you want to raise your right hand?
Both of us.
Yes. Read after me. Aye.
Aye. Aaron Magrum.
Dan Maturi. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Do you want to organize something else?
Sure.
I've got my papers here. Got to be carefully organized here. Let's see. Come on, now you want a question, don't you? It's going to be one of them days today, is it? Why don't you actually take that again? Well, now that's done, I guess I'd like to officially welcome Commissioner Maturi to his board. Congratulations and I look forward to working again. Beer.
I'd like to also say congratulations to you, Aaron Maturi.
No, thank you. Now we get to move forward, so. Okay, now that the offices are done, and the minutes. Any additions, corrections? Any issues with the minutes? If nobody has any, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve the minutes as written, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Culver. Is there any more discussion on minutes? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. Next we have the approval of the agenda, or then the additions, corrections. Not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Why do you make that motion?
Commissioner Culver makes a motion to approve the agenda as written, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Everly. Is there any more discussion on the agenda? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. Old and unfinished business. I guess two things I just wanted to bring up quick. First thing is we need to probably follow through on the low water crossing situation, or not low water crossings, but the low water boat ramps. You know, the main issue we had last year was we weren't really familiar with it, and those processes already start beginning in probably January and February to get on the list for game and fish in the core to help you out in the spring, and we were starting it in the spring, because... So, we should probably, you know, I mean, I will reach out too, but whatever, if you guys know anybody, or you know the guys at the core, just keep everybody reminded on our timeline that we should probably work to the best we can to see if we can get on those lists for help, if we can even, and maybe they can't build one, I don't know, but we should at least follow through this year since we were educated on that last year, so, just something to keep in mind. And then, another thing is with the, in regards to the summit pipeline, there's been a lot of discussion now in some of these counties about creating setbacks, especially if they aren't specifically, maybe for a specific project or something. So I think probably next month, prepare yourselves, that we're probably going to have to start talking about if we want to update our setbacks, do anything with it, and if we do, we probably have to go through an ordinance process like we have before with like a first reading and probably a public hearing, but there's definitely other counties doing that too, and I think Emmens County needs to reevaluate its setback situation. Just, I don't know what the right answer is, bring some ideas, whatever, you know, I'm looking into other counties, you know, if you've got other ideas, anything. I think prepare to probably bring it to the next meeting, and we should start discussing it.
At the next meeting, we'll also have what the setbacks turn out, right?
Right.
I'm not sure what they are exactly.
Well, I think in some of the situations, I think we're probably falling back to state law, which I think state law, I mean, it's not very, 500 feet or something, it's very minimal, so. I know other counties are looking into it, not just, I know Burley County a couple of weeks ago had a meeting, I think Dan was there, and I watched on the internet, and they're discussing, just reevaluate, and they didn't really say yes or no to anything, but they're, and I think we should at least make sure that, you know, this project goes through, that we're protecting our landowners and creating a setback that's, you know, mutually beneficial to both the companies and the landowners, so, bringing ideas or whatever you're thinking, kind of like what we talked about before, we should...
So, what about Burley County, you were up there?
No, there was a lot of pushback on it, big time, Aaron listened to it.
Right.
Did they address it, did they?
They didn't specify any setbacks, they were just, they used Emmens County, which you guys did.
Right, I think Burley County's big issue is they have three commissioners that didn't even run for reelection, so the majority of their board is going to turn over, so I think they were, I think the tone was they were in agreement, they want to do something, but didn't feel like it was really the right time. And then the other thing too is if you go through a proper ordinance process, you're going to have that first reading, you have to schedule a public hearing within, what, two weeks minimum after the first reading, you know, there just wasn't enough time even for that board to do it if they would have, so. So I think now, this next month too, once that board turns over, I think you're going to start seeing some, some action from at least their zoning board, and then from there up to the county commissioners, so. But I don't even know for sure which commissioners were on that zoning board, you know, they got a lot of turnover there, so. But, that being said, I think we need to at least address it and make sure that whatever we have, either what we have is good enough or we need to improve upon it, one or two. Nothing needs to really happen today, but just something to kind of remind yourselves that we're going to be working on it, and we're going to have to address something, because there are people in Emmens County that want to address, so. That's all I have for the old and unfinished business. Anybody have anything else? Well, if not, then we'll have Jeff. You're up, Jeff.
I won't take up too much of your time. I just wanted to announce my retirement. Effective when? July 1st.
Okay.
I wanted to give you enough time.
What'd you say, January?
July 1st. I wanted to give you enough time to find somebody.
Well, that's appreciated.
No difficulty in stuff, it's just time for me to... I figure coming down years with the government provides some 16 years service. Long enough.
Well, you've served Emmens County very well, I think we appreciate your service.
I try.
Yeah, no, well, I mean...
You know, it gives you time to decide if you want to connect Emmens County with another county, or if you want to continue to have one here.
Sure.
You know.
How many hours do you think you put in a week?
What's that?
How many hours would you need?
I work 20 hours a week.
20 hours a week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the job is 20 hours a week.
Since I have you here, there was, you're on the, I believe, the Emmens County Housing Authority?
Yes.
Would you, are you, do you want to continue on that board, or?
I could still continue if doing that for a while.
Well, I, like I said, just, I see you on the list and you were here, so it's just, you want to run out of the way out of the list, instead of having to call you, so.
I guess as long as...
And you don't have to decide the date, just wondering if you're even still interested, or?
Yeah.
I mean, you wouldn't have to appoint someone until January?
Guess I had to talk about that one.
Okay, well, you can think about it, but I just thought since I had you here.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's not a very hard one for me to be on.
Sure, okay, well, think about it, I guess, and then get back to me on it, if we have to find a replacement or not for that, but...
Well, in some doesn't happen to me and end up in a different zone, or something, I can do that.
Well, I really, I appreciate you giving us time. That's a big thing, you know, instead of, you know, shocking us with it, so that's great.
Yeah, I didn't want to do that.
Yeah, no, well...
I didn't want to walk in and tell you that two, you have two weeks.
That's much appreciated, so...
Do you want to, do you want to go until July? Do you want to go until July, if we would find someone before then? Do you want to quit before, or does it matter?
That's up to you. I mean, you know, that doesn't matter to me. I mean, if you find somebody before that, that's fine with me. I can go before, you know.
I just didn't know if you wanted to stay on.
Yeah, you know, if you want to find somebody before July 1st, that'd be fine, you know.
Well, I think we'll start the process and see where it goes, if we, if we find someone and if you feel like they don't need more than a couple of weeks with you, then you, we can work it out then too, I guess, if you want to, or something.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Do you have to be a vet to serve, to serve that, or can it be anybody?
I, I haven't looked into any of that, I guess, I mean, I would imagine it's probably quite beneficial that a veteran, but I don't know if it's required or not, so I'd have to check.
Well, Alex Olhouser was before you, right?
What's that?
Was Alex Olhouser in your position before you?
Yeah, my uncle Alex had, before I did, knee out for 20 years.
Oh, he was right before I knew.
I suppose traditionally it's always been a veteran, I...
I worked with the, I worked with the, you know, Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs. I'm not a, I'm a county employee, but I work with them, so, you know, and... That's, you know, that's where my job stands, you know. I don't know. I'm, 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 I'm going to be my, would be my kind of boss with them, over at Fargo.
Sure. Well, I mean, I suppose this is...
Yeah, we got...
Yeah, we got, I mean, we'll look into it, I'm sure there's probably some requirements.
Yeah, that needs to happen to work here as far as, you know, if you need any help.
Yeah, well, I guess, if anybody's got any more questions for Jeff, I guess the main thing is just to tell you thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that that's where my job is, so.
Sure appreciate it, and thank you for your service both to the country and Emmens County.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Denise, you're up next with the ownership taxes and abatements.
Okay, it is probable that we'll have to call in.
Yeah, does he know what number to call in, or are we supposed to call in?
Call the auditor's office and they can answer him, so, yeah. In the meantime, we can discuss the rest of the month. I handed you out a list. I have to drop the sheet here. So it has a list, the top section is what we're dealing with today. I included the previously approved below that, just so we can see a total picture that are just not seen made. The top section, our first one, the first parcel number listed, it was actually double taxed. This is some land right south of town, behind John Deere, and there's a few buildings there, and it was taxed as residential, but also as ag land. So, so I removed the ag land valuation on that. It did happen, I'm not sure how it got put on, but two years ago is when it started, which works out great, because I mean, I don't have to worry about past history with that.
So, what, what was it before?
I think it was all ag land, and two years ago they split it off.
The farmyard itself was, the farmyard itself was being acquired?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. And most of it still remained as ag land.
Gilbert Tilbernagel.
Except for the five acres that the buildings are on. Because apparently he's not farming, is why they did that? From what I could tell.
Okay, we have Gilbert on the phone, so we'll probably just jump to that since he's here.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, Gilbert, you're on with the county commission right now, and Denise is here also, so if you want to go ahead and kind of explain your phone caller, floor is yours.
Great, yes, thank you for allowing me to join you commissioners this morning. In summary, I've been a second generation farmer left of Lincoln, and for the past 14 years, I've always been able to meet the requirements for the farm residence exemption. And my operations and the information that I'm going to share with you has been consistent for 14 years and has not changed. Just summary, real quickly, I do farm 880 acres, and of that 880 acres, I lease out the cultivated land of a total of about 690, and remaining 190 acres I actively farm, which is be land and pasture. And I've got obviously a lot of responsibilities being an active farmer. And when I filled out the application, that's the category that I completed, and it requires to have at least 10 acres where you're an active farmer, and in my case, I, I cut and mow and bale at least 10 acres of hay per year, depending on the conditions of the crop and drought conditions and so forth, I have cut up to over, over 100 acres in bale that, and in addition to that, you know, I'm also responsible for the weed control, eroded control. I've got over a mile of shelter belt that I need to maintain, and occasionally I happen to lack stock. But in addition to that, I also need to keep up all the fences on all the 880 acres, as well as remove any rocks and debris. So there's quite a bit of active farming going on when I'm there, and I, and the house that I stay in is totally used for farming. And the second category has to do with your income, and it's, I believe it's 66% of your total income needs to be from farming. Over the past 14 years, I've totally only been a farmer, and prior to that, I'd worked in hospitals for about 30 years, and, and, but since, since then, I've, 100% of my income, or nearly 100%, comes from farming. And I stay up in North Dakota about four months out of the year, mainly when there's the work to be done, and then the remainder of that, I, I live in California. Over the 14 years, I've had two residences, and my primary residence is in California, but, and I farm here, but when I'm in North Dakota, again, the farm is used 100% for farming. There is eight months not there, it's also used for farming. Office space, storage, another big area that is utilized for, and it's been a big issue with farming in California, North Dakota, and security the last few years. Take care where we've had some major break-ins in the county over the years, so myself and others have spent thousands of dollars on security, and not to mention hundreds of hours that hasn't been reimbursed. So all of that said, I did contact Melanie Appleman from the North Dakota Department of Taxation, I believe that's the same person, your tax collector, has been talking with, and she agreed solely that I met the requirements of 10 acres, a 66% income in farm residence exemption. And I asked her about the requirements of having to be a primary resident, and she said, because it's not anything that's listed on the application or anything in writing that I've seen in the, in the definition of terms or anything like that. And she says, there's nothing written anywhere that says you have to be a primary resident in North Dakota. She said some counties have opted to do things differently, but the practice and the precedent in Emmens County is here where it's been to allow residents in both counties. And I guess I was just kind of blind sided to get notice that I was being denied, because the practice has been, as I said, to allow me to get, get the exemption, and each year, two years, I fill out the documentation, and occasionally I didn't quite do it right, and staff are real courteous and send it back, and I gave whatever information they needed, and, and I've always received the exemption, and I haven't received any kind of notice, but there's been a change in the law by the county commissioners or the state of North Dakota, and that's why I'm here today, to request reconsideration of the practice in the past, and if there's a change in the future, let me know about it, and prior to what it's due. And that's really all I have to say.
All right. Denise?
So, a lot of his statements are true. Pretty much all of them, I'm not saying these.
Yeah, well, she's a little ways away, we're kind of, we're in the courtroom here, Gilbert, so, I don't know if you'll hear that well.
Is that better?
Little bit, maybe you can get a little closer.
Unless she'll be eating the microphone, she's any closer, so.
Everybody else will have their ears blown out.
Okay.
So, everything in the general sense of what he's saying is true. There is no black and white laws for that it must be a North Dakota resident, and it must be North Dakota income, or what actively farming represents. The state has allowed the county to make their judgments and administrative practices during that time. I can't speak for past tax equalization directors of how they were handling things. I think they might have been more flexible, in a sense. The way I interpret the laws is that, yes, he must be a North Dakota resident, it's a practice I had in my previous county and in this county. Yes, he does have 10 acres that his house sits on, okay? The number of acres that he farms or doesn't farm is irrelevant. But, in my understanding, it's not every year that he hates, it's not every year, you know, he talked a lot about, at a minimum, he's always hated around his farmhouse and the ditches. That has been evident when I looked at satellite imaging over the past history. I haven't seen any additional in that area. It's, it's my decision that, number one, he's not a North Dakota resident. This law was intended for farmers in North Dakota who reside here, and that means making their living here, paying taxes here, which he pays taxes in general. But voting here, being a resident, is, is, is a primary residence of being here. As far as active farming, it just says that he's active farming, actively farming. In my review of the facts that he presented, he is not making his bread and butter here. He's definitely a California resident. Just doing some hay does not mean he's actively farming here. He's not getting, you know, am I going to pay my bills or not from farming in North Dakota? So to get a North Dakota exemption for that, it's my, my decision if you would uphold to remain exempt, or denying his exemption.
Well, I guess, like, my, my thought process is just wondering, since it's been going on for 14 years, if he's the only one. You know what I mean, I mean, if there are other people that are, like I said, claiming to be primary residents, even outside of Emmens County, not even in it, I mean, even if it's Burley County or something, I mean, that, that all goes under the state.
The state, I will get them out at the county.
Right, but it, it's a farm residence exemption for Emmens County, right? So you should really be in Emmens County, or it's all...
Or North Dakota.
So it's anywhere in North Dakota. So, my question would be, is there anyone claiming the farm residence exemption in Emmens County, or, you know, that lives in South Dakota, Montana, Minnesota, claims they're primary residents? So, the reason why I bring that up is that, you know, if we haven't actually had a policy on it, some standard, I think we probably should, but I don't know if we should have it like right at the moment. Like, I guess my opinion is, is since Gilbert's this only situation, it's always happened that long, perhaps we maybe move forward with it for now, and then we draft the policy for upcoming, and then check into if others are falling under that, you know, because you... One thing I don't like on this board is picking and choosing, and then the only reason someone gets it or doesn't is because they speak up or don't. You know, now that this problem has been addressed, we need to make sure that everybody's buying by it, so like, maybe just, I guess my thought process is probably allowing it this time with the intention or the information that going forward, we're going to look at everybody's, and then this won't happen, if that's the case.
Well, it's, I do look at where their mailing address is, where it's handed out, and, you know, as far as Bismarck, you know, any place within the state.
Right.
If they're coming down here from Bismarck, they're still, and their farming operation is here.
Right.
And they use that house when they're cabbying and during their lunch breaks, you know, that's all still within the farm operation locally in North Dakota. So those I have definitely allowed.
Yes. Well, when I'm back in North Dakota, and for four months out of the year, and when I'm there, I definitely have plenty of work to do.
But again, that's not your primary farming operation.
It's in route, it is active farming, and, you know, as far as... And uh, you know, uh as far as uh income goes, uh uh the price of commodities here in California are in the tank and uh most of my income will come from North Dakota this year, so.
That income is regular farming there.
Right, well, I think the big issue that we're talking about is probably the residency more than anything and that's just one I I I'm in agreement that you should at least live in North Dakota to get the farm residence exemption, you should be a primary resident of the state. I guess my question is just whether or not you, you know, if we don't have a formal policy, I don't like acting from this table at the moment. Like, that's the one thing I don't like, so that's where the thought process would be is, you know.
But I don't want the precedence set.
Well, I don't think there is a precedence.
I've heard in the past that we've allowed things for a year for people to fix things and I don't know if that should be a precedence either. Just like if he brings us to state, we can decide at next month's meeting, you know, like the state in North Dakota does when they get appeals, they're not granting it for the year.
Well, I don't think we're granting anything, we're just discussing here. I mean, does anybody else have an opinion on it here? I, I mean, go ahead.
Well, you know, the thing is, he was approved for fourteen years and and then all of a sudden, when he's still doing the same guidelines as he was the year before and we haven't changed anything, it's hard to not, it's hard to deny him because he was approved before. And I agree with you, you're right, but at the same token, maybe we gotta improve our guidelines, put more, you know, other things in our guidelines to go by.
But fourteen years of being wrong doesn't mean that we should continue approving doing wrong.
I I I know where you're coming from, but at the same token, I see where he's coming from.
And fourteen years ago, they didn't even have them do the paperwork at all. So, you know, as far as that's considered.
I think the renting part of it too, that, I mean, he said he'd get most of his stuff from rent, well, that doesn't really count.
That's correct.
Because he's not, he's not really doing the work, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm not disagreeing with any of those things. I just, my, always my main concern is that you find this problem and then it's like you always wanna address it at the next meeting and sometimes it just, I mean, if it's been wrong for fourteen years, I don't see anything wrong with correcting it and just making it right for next year or so. That that's my philosophy on it with that, because it it seems just kind of short sighted with, you know, just making a decision right now, especially with the fact that, I mean, you've been here for what, about a year and a half?
Yeah, what?
You know, so I mean, there's.
Eight years' experience.
Oh, right, well, I'm not criticizing you, but what I mean is just the the Emmons County philosophy and the policies and the way you're doing it is different from the last person and different from the last person. And there 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 really should be some kind of an adjustment period because the one thing this board has to recognize and all of its employees is we work for the people. It's not like, oh, we're gonna just cut this short right now. I mean, we've done that in the past with things, it doesn't always work out, it's always best to have a transition period. I guess that's my belief on it. I don't, I I think, I didn't realize that you could even get a farm residence exemption, you know, without living in North Dakota. I mean, obviously, the state of North Dakota has let that slip through too, so it's not just Emmons County doing it and that's why, you know, like, kind of like what Gary said, if we're gonna create a policy, if it's up to the counties and our belief is that you have to live in, at least in North Dakota to get this residence exemption, I'm totally fine with that. But we should probably craft a policy, vote on it, you know, solidify it, have it here and then that's your tool from now on to go, hey, this is our tool, not just decisions made by one officer by a couple commissioners at the moment and then another tax director and two commissioners later, you're debating it again. I mean, it should get solidified and that's that's more my belief on it rather than whether or not it should be allowed or not. I think for now, since we don't have a policy, I'm of the belief to probably allow it for this year and make sure that we fix the problem going forward. That's my belief.
Well, and this wasn't randomly decided. I had it into the state, the state came back, you know, and said the same thing that it should be, they were ready to defend this denial, even at the state level. And I've talked to other counties, Burley County had one that the guy farmed pineapples in Hawaii and came back here.
Mm-hmm.
Um and he denied that as well.
But was he approved previously? I mean, because that's part of the discussion is that it's been going on for.
That's the thing.
Over a decade, I mean, that's the.
Well, there's come, there comes a point where we gotta step up and change until we can.
Right, I agree with that totally, I totally agree with that, but just.
That's okay, if you wanna put it off, we can put it off.
So is there any other ones?
Nope.
That's the only one in the state?
That's the only one that I have. And yes, I do watch for addresses and things like that to try to get in a discussion with people. Um that's why some of these other denials are happening. Um so I don't know if we're gonna put all of those off for another year for you guys to review them. Um I've got some that have their discussion with them. Um they use the house mainly for family when they come back, a second house. Um I've got, you know, if I hadn't had the discussion with them, they'd still be approved as a vacant house, you know? And that's sort of where my job is to talk with people and look at situations and make those determinations. I've got ones on here, two of them that they've got people living in the house and whenever they need something done on their farm, um they can call this person and say, hey, we go, that fence is torn, we could go fix it. And uh they do that so they don't charge them any rent. So they were approved as a farm labor. That's not a farm labor. Um so there's been many situations that I have denied that the previous people, previous tax directors have just like a why? Where do we, do you wanna list them? Do you wanna review them all and give them all another year? I mean, where do we draw that line?
Well, I think a lot of the line gets drawn at the state. Well, does the state deny this farm residence exemption?
She's sent in her email that she would deny. And then they never even demand that.
I mean, if that's the case, then that that's the other question too, is then why are we discussing this if the state's gonna deny?
Because he still has a um, he still has an opportunity to, it's within his rights to still appeal to you guys.
Right, I understand that too, but I mean, that's, I mean, this is the, I mean, why are we, why don't we just have a policy then with that being the case? I mean, that's, that's the point of getting at, what was the reasoning for it in the past? I mean, one thing I know within its county is we've always been on the side to allow the farm residence exemptions rather than not. I mean, we've always, I mean, given people extra time, I mean, it's always kind of been the policy to do that, maybe that's always what the policy was in the past and that's why it's, you know, to just change things all of a sudden is difficult, that's all.
Denise is going by the state, states is what we're supposed to do, right?
Yes. Before sending him the paperwork for that.
You're following all the state guidelines.
Yeah.
What about Joe? What are your feelings on this Joe sitting here? Can we ask you about?
Uh hang on Gilbert, uh Gilbert, hang on a second.
Gilbert, I'm asking our state's attorney locally, his legal opinion.
Well, I'm surprised that he's been given the exemption for fourteen years, to be honest. I think the reason we we maybe didn't catch it before, so she's not really going off the county policy, she's going after the, off the state law, so she's looking at the state laws and interpreting, doing her own research to try to figure out if these applicants follow, you know, the steps or or the requirements of the state law to gain the exemption. So if the previous person's not doing that much research, calling these people and finding out the further information and realizing, well, this is actually someone who lives out of state and is mostly just leasing property and coming back for a few months and not necessarily meeting all the steps and they're they're an out of state person, if if the previous person in that position didn't find out that information, they would just get the exemption rubber stamped with it. You would never know.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know that there's really another policy that needs to be, maybe it's just her following the state law. The state law isn't the guidelines, I mean, she had a question about, she reached out to the state, they said they would defend it, I mean, this is her job, but I think it's her call, so I would.
I think so too, I agree with Denise, I think if, like if Gilbert wants to protest it, he should protest it, you know, but.
But he's doing that right now?
Yeah.
No, I mean, he wants to.
Yes, come.
Right, I mean, so I think the big thing right now here is, uh, you know, we've had enough discussion about this, I guess I'll entertain a motion on some kind of a, you know, whether to approve or deny the farm residence exemption is what we're looking at right here, not. So, I mean, that's where, that's where it stands, so I'll entertain a motion to approve, table or deny the farm residence exemption for Gilbert Silverman right now. I mean, we've had enough discussion about it, so.
I'll make a motion to deny.
So Commissioner Everly makes a motion to deny the farm residence exemption. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Culver. Is there any more discussion on the farm residence exemption for Gilbert Silverman? I think the agreement down here then is that we are, the motion, or at least discussion of it, is to follow what the tax director is saying is state law and the state basically verifying that, that's kind of the discussion on that, right? Any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Farm residence exemption denied.
So you don't, uh Joe, you don't think we need to update anything then? Because the only thing I bring up is, uh, she quits in a year or two or you get two commissioners, then you're back in the same boat.
Yeah, but they're supposed to follow the same boat anyway.
Right, but how come we never did it before? That's that's what, that's what I'm questioning, yeah.
Well, I mean, with with a lot of these um laws, there might be some gray area, there are some um room for interpretation and a lot of times you just need to get more facts. So I don't know if the next person's gonna do as much background work and find out some of that information, um but if she has, I mean, you, do you go off any other county policies or you're basically just reading the state laws and?
Right, just using the state laws with uh, and I know did for reasons, but when they're presented in front of me.
Right.
I can't ignore them either, you know? When I'm on the phone with somebody and I say, oh yeah, we just use that for this, so I don't know.
So just for clarification, since Gilbert's still on the phone, is there still a process to appeal to the state then?
Yes.
So so Gilbert could appeal to the state and then it would go there?
Yep.
If that would be the case, so. I guess for now, Gilbert, just to let you know, the county's denied your farm residence exemption and um you have the opportunity to to appeal to the state tax department, I'm assuming, and um and see if they uphold that decision or if they would grant you the farm residence exemption. So.
Okay.
That's where it's at, so thank you for your time, Gilbert.
Yep.
Yep, bye.
Okay, okay. So moving on to the rest of the list, um the next three underneath that double taxation, um the next three are new homes that were not assessed prior to the equalization meetings. So we're just adding them, they are aware. So everybody that was on here except for um the first one got letters sent to them. And their letters are cash here, paperwork there, and in that letter, it tells them the reason, um and it tells them the uh um that they have fifteen days to appeal um to my office or if they wanna crop in front of the commissioners, the date is given for the commissioner meeting for them to attend. So notice has been duly given. Um all of these I've talked to personally um as far as why the denial is coming. In Puritan's case, um since he was no longer eligible, or his son, this is not dealing with the dad's house, it's the son. So the son is still living in his old house and in the process of building his new house yet. So his, he did not meet the qualifications and so the old house that he's living in is taxable and his new house is taxable. So that is um in addition for the partial construction on the new house and the full assessment on the old house. And when I was out there, we also looked at, you know, in a shop, he does have living quarters for a hired man, so we are doing the farm, the new farm residence exemption on that to make sure that property is covered.
So the increased part is uh on all these denied here, that would be what their taxes, they they would get taxed on that increased part?
Yes, in addition to what they were already notified.
Were those approved before, all those denials, or that's just?
Nope, these are late denials, um most of them, a couple of them were in beforehand, I just didn't, you know, to get an assessment done in time. You know, having that March thirty-first deadline and then trying to turn around and April meeting have a part of that book is too tight a window, so usually they come in as submitted taxes. Um it's nice when I have the information in my computer, like some of them, the previous tax directors did pick up the house information, so I could just apply that information and review it by the picture to make sure that there's somewhat of an accurate assessment. And I air on the light side then, so that way um I tell them that I'll come out and do a full reassessment, but that'd be the next year, so we're just giving something on the books for now. That's not all of them, just some of them. I've had other denials when I found out that they were renting it out. They've always claimed vacant, but apparently they were renting it out, so. Lots of things come to light when you keep talking.
Has anybody got anything else, Denise, sir?
So with that one point five million that I'm adding today in taxation, with the previously approved, permitted taxes and abatements, um there's the negative six twenty-two below, so total value changes since they approved, the assessment book has been nine hundred seventy-six dollars, or, I mean, thousand dollars. I am tongue tied today. Any questions on any of them?
I don't think so. Anybody else has anything else? All right.
Thanks, Denise. You need a motion to approve our post?
Well, we can do them, yeah, I guess we can do them now. Has anybody got any questions on any of these? These are the abatements, some of them are abate, or almost all of them are abatements on these, right?
I did the abatement form, so you would, because there's no prescribed.
Okay, so majority of these are actually denials, they're all on a list there for?
Yep, everything that's there has.
These are all denials?
A form for you.
Okay.
So that way you're able to sign off and not just have standard form to look at, that's not, you know, that's happiness.
Well, basically, these are abatements, refunds and denials, basically everything that coincides with that list there, so. I entertain a motion to.
Well, we can just make a motion to approve this whole list.
Right, that's why I'd say I would make a motion to just basically approve the list.
I'll make a motion to approve the whole list.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Holmes to approve the list provided by Denise, and seconded by Commissioner Terry. Is there any more discussion on any of these? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? List of abatements and denials approved.
Thank you.
Good, we'll get them signed.
Congratulations.
All right, Kasia, you're next on the list.
All right.
You can jump in, she's here.
I'm here today to announce that Connie, after forty-three years, is retiring from um our office. I'm here today to announce that Connie, after forty-three years, is retiring from our office, so we're sad about that. Um, she's definitely been a great, um, person in our office, so we're sad to see her leave. So, um, her last day will be February twenty-eighth. And so I guess I am here to ask for a motion to refill the position so I can start the process of advertising and interviewing and whatnot. Ideally, we would like to bring somebody on board if it works out to be able to work with Connie for a few weeks, um, to won't say necessarily learn everything she does because that's not possible, but to get the process started.
Do you have anybody in mind?
Well, we have to open it up.
Is that basically a full-time job then?
Yep. We just, we hope we find somebody as great as Connie.
Well, Connie's definitely been a valuable asset to Emmens County, no doubt about that, especially to the four-H side and everything, too, and she's just been a big help. Got to be some big shoes to fill.
For sure.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I don't, I, that's, we should probably keep that position staffed, there's a lot of responsibilities with that, just in the office alone, so.
You're gonna open it up here in January, or what?
Uh, I'm still working on it because she obviously has been in the same position for forty-three years, so I'm working on the job description and everything, um, working with some other counties to, to get that finalized. I was actually hoping that perhaps we could already certainly be posting it at the end of the month or early January, it just kind of depends how the ball goes. So we would ideally have time to do interviews and stuff and, like I said, bring somebody on board before she leaves in February.
Yeah, I think, well, for the sake of just making sure we do it right, I guess I'll entertain a motion to throw it out for application. I don't know if we really have to, I guess, everybody's in agreement with this, anybody got a problem with it? I don't know if that's really, I mean, we're replacing a current employee, I don't know if that's. Do you, what do you think, we need a motion on something like that?
I think you're good to go.
Yeah, I don't think there's an issue with that, I guess, so.
Alright, well, um, I'll get that going and hopefully you'll all promote it once it's listed.
Sure.
Thank you.
So next would be the contract for superintendent services for CREA, which must be the superintendent of schools.
I gave you guys all a copy. Hey, as you know, Brad Dick, um, he used to be the superintendent of HME. He now works for this company out of, um, the name of the company is that C-R-E-A. And Burley County's already contracted with him to do superintendent school services for Burley County. And because we don't have superintendent schools right here in Emmens, I asked Brad if he would be interested, and he said he wouldn't. Um, he would take care of that annexation that we have coming up, the first meeting already on Monday. He's holding a hearing with both county committees, ours and Burley County, so he's already helping out and, um, I, I suggest that you guys contract with him, like his fee is fifty dollars an hour and he's only gonna charge it when we need him, you know, like during this annexation now, and after that, there won't be anything.
So there's gone, what if they charge?
No, you know, I discussed that with him, I said, what we did before is we paid a monthly fee to superintendent schools, sometimes they had nothing. There was nothing for them to do, and then all of a sudden you have an annexation and they're overwhelmed and they're thinking, well, that's. So he agreed that he would just do it as, as he, as we.
And is that just a one-year agreement?
Um.
Yeah, it says right here, this agreement is subject to renewal by both parties on an annual basis. This job description is not intended or shall not be construed to be a complete list of all skills, duties, responsibilities, or working conditions associated with the job. Is it intended to be a reasonable outline of those principal job elements essential to maintaining the county superintendent position? County reserves the right to modify the job descriptions at any time. Any modifications proposed by the county shall be subject to review and approval by CREA. It's not intended as a contract for employment, rather a contract for services, so basically it's just an annual contract, kind of like a joint powers agreement, almost like we do with other counties and stuff, so.
And you know, Gary, Joyce did, um, Keisha did reach out to Joyce, and on election day, she came to talk to me, and she would be interested too, but she wanted to know more about it. So I told her about, you know, this contract that we had, and she said it would be fine, so if you guys would want to just do this contract and later on, if you want to do something.
Well, that's why, yeah, I just assumed that when you deal with this contract and see where it goes from there.
Well, at least he'll do it that way, he'll take it, so he couldn't find anybody anyway, so.
Yeah, and now they, that, yeah, that's what I mean.
Well, I think the difficulty you have is you have somebody who's new to the superintendent's position, have to jump right into a annexation, that could be pretty difficult. On top of that, I think our monthly rate that we were paying for the superintendents didn't cover an annexation, did it, Marla? So then they usually get some kind of a like if there was an annexation or something, and there was a lot of?
Superintendent schools did do it, we just never.
Right, but they do, did they do it for just their monthly salary, or did we usually?
Yeah, just their monthly salary.
Okay, so they did. Because I thought there was, wasn't that the conversation?
She had asked for more and it was denied.
Okay, so that had kind of been an issue in the past too, though, people now want to do the annexations for the two hundred dollars a month because it's pretty bad pay when you're doing an annexation. It's good pay when there's nothing like that going on, but it's not very good when you're doing probably.
I mean, if you guys would deny us today, I don't know what we would do because the first day is Monday already.
I think the situation we'd have here is with the annexation that we're dealing with and everything, we probably should go forward with this and then, so we can find someone to replace it.
Who did you say the other person was?
You know, Joyce would be interested, she wanted to know more about it.
Joyce, John. She was a school teacher at the school. So this agreement would be till June thirtieth of next summer, which I think would be, yeah, then we can rehash and see what we want to do. Right.
No, I agree with that.
We gotta have a motion made with this?
Yeah.
Yes, I would say we got that more.
I'll make a motion to go ahead with the disagreement.
Commissioner Holm makes a motion to enter an agreement with, uh, Central Regional Education Association for, uh, at least the initial term of December first to June thirtieth of twenty, so December first of twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Seconded by Commissioner Everly. Is there any more discussion on the joint agreement with, uh, CREA? I'm hearing any of those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Agreement approved?
Excuse me.
Alright, is Craig here?
Oh, um, Craig wants to be removed, I'm sorry.
Oh.
He just ducked in there for a minute.
Alright.
He didn't get it, he didn't get the quotes that he wanted.
Oh, Skylar's not here yet, but you can, um, how about you bring up courthouse hours, is that, wanna do that now? Marla?
Okay, I gave you guys, um, a copy of the holiday schedule, like, just so that you know, if people ask what our holiday hours are gonna be. The North Dakota Sentry Code says that, and we follow it, and our policy states at two, that we would close at noon on the twenty-fourth of December. Well, being that twenty-fourth of December is on a Saturday, we follow the state law, we close at noon on a Friday, which would be the twenty-third, we'll be closing at noon. And then also with Christmas Day landing on a Sunday, our policy says we close the next day, so the twenty-sixth will be closed. And then New Year's Day is also on a Sunday, and our policy, the state policy, says that you will be closed on that Monday following the Sunday holiday, so. We'll be closing at noon on the twenty-third, we'll be closed on the twenty-sixth of December, and we'll be closed on January second. I just wanted to bring it forward so you guys know if people ask you, and that's what our policy is.
Was that it?
That's it, it's just information.
Okay, anybody got any issues with the holiday hours, or? Okay, how about the joint powers agreement?
Okay, that's for emergency services with Mary Sager from Burley County, we gave you that earlier. I also gave you a copy of them. She didn't change any of her, um, any of her costs, everything stayed the same.
So it's the same agreement you signed traditionally?
Yes.
Yeah, um, and Mary's done an outstanding job for Emmens County, that's for sure, so. So I entertain a motion to approve table or deny the joint powers agreement with Emergency Services of Burley County.
So we should get twenty-seven fifty a month?
We pay Burley County that.
Fourteen there?
No, twenty. What's, why is there, like, what's the, what's the eleven hundred dollars for?
What's the what for?
The other eleven hundred dollars, I mean, she's got, you got?
If she goes over, um, her hours, from what we pay Burley County, she charges an additional forty.
Okay, so we gave her, we gave Burley County fourteen hundred dollars, then she went over eleven hundred dollars?
If she goes over, we pay her that eleven hundred, yes.
So how often has it gone over?
She puts a budget together of like thirty thousand a year, um, and, yeah, we've, I don't know.
How long she?
But we, she, we've never got over her budget, it's usually thirty thousand.
And how long have we been contracted with them?
Okay, how long have we been contracting with her? Gary, do you know up here?
Oh, ten years.
Tw- two thousand nine is when we had that big flood here, is when she came on.
Oh, that, that's when we first, okay.
Yeah, because I think after childhood, wasn't it, I think we'd ended the contract at some time, nine or ten.
It was two thousand nine when we had that flood, I think, and then she came on board and helped us get through that flood.
I think she came on in, uh, either late nine or two thousand and ten.
I guess the only reason I'm asking is, is there anybody here that'd be wanting to do it other than, you know? I mean, I have no problem going this way, but I want to.
Courthouse or here in the county?
Yeah, you know, courthouse. I didn't know if anybody, nobody, that's what I just, you know, if you wanted to give somebody the opportunity here in the courthouse, I have no problem with the agreement if nobody else wants to do it.
Yeah, I'm sure it's not a full-time job, so nobody really.
Right, that's what I mean, that's what I thought of somebody here wanting to do it.
So much of that is dictated by events, whether you have a, a natural disaster or hazmat situation, that's really gonna dictate what kind of workload that is, so. Flooding, for example, uh, when you had that flood up at the Braddock area, or two thousand nine, the flooding, the amount of hours and the expertise and the knowledge that you gotta deal with, with the federal side of this, or funding, is, um, or, yeah, it's astronomical, so. If there's no natural disasters, no weather events, it's, it's probably not a bad position, but when you have something happen, you gotta have your ducks in the row and you gotta know what to do, so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve table or deny the joint powers agreement with Burley County for Emergency Services.
Will make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Culver makes a motion to approve the joint powers agreement with Burley County for Emergency Managing Services, is there a second? Is that a second? Good, seconded by Commissioner Terry. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Joint Powers Agreement approved.
You get to go with some of your miscellaneous stuff.
Yep. So, um, review appointments of officials and board members for expiring terms effective January one, twenty twenty-three.
So do you want to explain to Commissioner Terry how we do this?
Yeah, well, so basically we have, you know, these are a list of boards, you know, especially, you know, some of these ones at these positions, uh, everyone in yellow is someone that is appointed, or even their term is up, some of them are singular years, like most of the county officers, we have to, it's more every year. And then some of them, like, obviously, if the Water Resource Board, Weed Board, Public Health Boards, those terms are multiple years, you know, some are three, some are four, some are five. And, um, the county committee, I believe, is that School Board Committee that serves in conjunction with CREA, probably the superintendent of schools for the, like an annexation, we have a formal board. So those individuals on the county committee are on for that board. And, um, and the South Country Human Service Board, that's the board that Marla and I serve on, you have to have one county commissioner. And, right, you don't have to have the auditor, but
No.
Since Emmens County is the host county of that, which means we basically pay all the bills and you manage everything, the auditor is on that. It seems like a pretty common sense move, but, uh, if another commissioner wants to serve on that board, you are welcome to, I, I will take the reappointment, nobody else wants it, but you have to have one county commissioner, that's Sentry Code, I'm not, I believe, right, Marla?
Right.
So someone has to serve on that board.
And so in the past, what it was, is the, the person that their term is up, um, the commissioner in that district would either contact that person or find somebody else to replace, is how it was usually.
Yeah, so if this, if one of these spots is someone in your district, traditionally you've got the opportunity to either contact them or, I guess, replace them if you want, so. Big one, it looks like on the Water Resource Board, there's three people up. Um, otherwise, it looks like on the other boards, it looks like just we're just one, other than the county officers, which we have to appoint every year, but most of those people are mostly full-time employees.
Jeff said S D L, right?
Uh, for the Housing Board, yeah, I always think about it, but we don't, we don't make any decisions today, really, the next meeting is when we'll make the appointment, so you basically have a month to, uh, contact some of these folks here, um.
How's that taxi right there? That's every year? That's not only a one-year term?
Yeah.
Yep, same with the VA officer and, um, yeah, so those positions are appointed every year. So yeah, like on the Weed Board there, I guess Leonard Vedder could actually be in your district.
He said, he's in two.
Oh, he isn't too, yeah, okay, so it doesn't go up that far then, because it goes up across the highway, right, then? I don't know, I'd have to look at the new boundary on that, because I know he always was in District Two, but I couldn't remember if that changed or re-districted.
So the superintendent schools, will that, do you gotta take that?
That would be the, you guys took care of that one, then with that Brad Dick.
Would he, will he take that, or we have?
Well, you could still appoint a superintendent of schools, though, I mean, you would have to, but if you did find somebody, you know. Well, you could still appoint someone to the superintendent of schools, that position didn't get eliminated, we just contracted it out for now.
Right.
So if you did find someone that was interested, you could still bring one, you know, I mean, you'd be in this agreement and tell them, but there is a ninety-day opt-out period too, so ninety days before that deadline. If we did have superintendent schools, you could opt out, so if we do find someone, I don't think you'd want to just go, oh, we don't have that position no more, you still.
Oh, you're right.
Right, you'd still probably want to bring someone on, even if there is a, because in my mind, if you have someone who maybe doesn't understand the position, it still would be a bad idea to have this contract in place for the annexation, which is a big process that they may, you know, so either way, we're probably doing the right thing, but you know, we probably don't have to actively look for someone. You know, we probably don't have to actively look for someone immediately at the moment, but especially if someone would approach us or down the road, if you find someone, that position is still.
And you know what the superintendent schools, the math count is done by Hazleton, there, there was a resolution passed years ago where a lot of the, um, duties at the county superintendent schools has been, um, changed now in a resolution, like Hazleton takes care of the math count, Strasburg School takes care of Spelling Bee, Litten School does the bus garage training for the, um, bus drivers. Um, all the DPI reports and stuff, I, I do all those. So the only other thing that there really is, is somebody wants school records. Well, we keep all the school records here, and Dick thought it would be good to continue doing that, and anybody in the courthouse can run down the mullbilly with the school records.
Well, I think at the moment, we don't have to just be actively searching for someone by the end of the year, but just thought process there, if someone is interested, we've got to agree.
So the only reason why.
Something good for roughly about a year, a little better, then we're gonna be back at the same mullbilly, you're gonna contract out or find a superintendent of schools, so just make sure we're not eliminating it, we're just basically contracting out for now, so. And then I'll, I'll contact John the board about the water, water board, whether it's mine precinct. Gary, you wanna contact Tim Webber about the water board?
Yeah.
I believe he's from that precinct, and then Dave, you wanna talk to Joey Culver about the water board?
Okay.
And then, um, Dave, you wanna call Jackie Grunfelder about the health board?
Okay.
'Cause she's up too, so. And then Cordley Ogerin, that, that'd be district, that'd be your district, and I got Gary, about the county committee, he's up.
Kurt Wiser would be two.
Kurt would be in district once, that'd be Dave's again, so Dave's got a lot of phone calls to make.
Kurt Wiser.
Kurt Wiser about the county committee, the county school committee.
I'll contact Corby.
Okay. Right, I think that pretty much settles.
Who's Leonard Better?
Leonard Better, that'd be mine, I guess, I was, I was only when I was questioned with the re-districting, I was still, um, um, we had campaigned the whole county, so I didn't own my district as good as last time, so I just won everyone, so. And then, uh, I can contact Jeff, 'cause he kinda mentioned he would think about it, so I'll, I'll talk to him in a week or two and see what he's thinking about that. The housing authority. And then, um.
So getting, getting back to that thing on Jeff, then, what are you, what are we gonna do there?
Well, with Jeff, we're gonna put, it's, it's an appointed position, but you still hire it out, and you have to go through a process of applications and all that too, so we'll put it out for applications like a new employee, and then basically, when you hire it, you're appointing it, and then you're just reappointing it every year, just kind of play that.
So when do we put that out?
Well, we'll have to put that out, you know, soon here, so we can find replacements, so, um. I suppose Marlis, he probably talked to Pam Binder or something about getting the proper job description, and we'll, we'll put that out there as soon as reasonable.
Does Jeff have anybody in mind?
Well, I think the thing is, you can't really have people in mind at those positions, especially with the veterans office, you're gonna have to, it's gonna have to go through a. Yeah, they'll go through a posting period and interview process, and I'm sure there's gonna be scoring differences based on if they're a veteran or not, and whether they even are eligible, whether they're veteran or not, I don't know. Assuming they probably are eligible, but there's probably gonna be veterans preference on that too, so if you have a veteran, that's gonna be, so you gotta make sure you follow all those processes, so. Yep, okay, well, I think we got the positions squared away, let's see if we've got any questions.
Which Grunfelder was that?
Jackie.
Jackie.
Jackie's on there.
Yep.
How often do they meet?
Well, that, when the, oh, the board meets a quarterly on that one, so, but she's on the board already, but her term, she took over for someone, it was just a year to the term that expires, and then she'll be up for a five-year term after that, so. Okay, so the next would be the liquor license for Art Place by the Bay, just got a liquor license here, no, over there. And I also have a liquor license for Mike Couch doing business at Cattail Resort, and a liquor license for the Threshing Association. I guess, unless anybody's got any reason, I guess we could probably just approve all three of them. Entertain a motion to approve, or?
I make a motion to approve.
All three of them, or one of them? Okay, Commissioner Maitieri makes a motion to approve all three liquor permits, Art Place by the Bay, Miss Kitty's Bar, the Threshing Union, and Cattail Resort. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Culver, is there any more discussion on the liquor permits? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Permits approved.
Are you gonna keep doing the miscellaneous, Gary?
Yeah, well, we're doing miscellaneous now until Skylar comes in. Oh, there he is, okay, um, let's see here. Yeah, we're gonna just hold off on the rest, so, okay, Skylar, you're up.
Morning, question?
Morning.
What do you guys wanna start with, anything? You guys got anything else?
Why don't you just, uh, go ahead and start with what you got, or anything?
Okay, just a little status for the road department, um, mid-November, our first part of November, we found a boss culvert that was, the road needed to be closed, so we ended up able to get two new culverts put in. That was on sixty-first street up there. So the guys did a really good job on that, so that's, the road was only closed for like, I believe, three weeks, so in order to get the culverts in and everything like that, so. It's up by, um.
Sort of the Roger Mattson?
Yeah, Roger Mattson, he was, uh, very helpful, he actually gave us, let us get some dirt from him to fill it in. Uses some of his property for stationery and stuff like that, very helpful to the county to work with him, so.
I know you made the male lady very happy with that, so it was like a fifteen-mile detour to go around there, so they were.
Yeah.
They were very happy you got that done as soon as you did.
Yeah, with, luckily, I thought with the snow, you know, I ordered the culverts and then it snowed that, so I was a little nervous about that, but we got it, the guys were able to get it. Banged out pretty quick and easy, so, um, we started digging the garbage pit up for the city, it was approved, oh geez, that was approved. Shortly after I first started here, probably, I think April or May, we approved us to dig that, so we started digging that, um. The guys are running their routes today with the snow, so there's nobody digging on it now, but I think in another three days, we should pretty much have it, so.
That trailer that's up there, is that supposed to go in there then?
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll demolish that one.
Okay, I seen it sitting there for a while, that's why.
Yeah, we're just trying to find the right time, we'll demolish it before we leave, and I've talked to Virgil at the city, he was up there and looked at the, our progress on the, the new pit that we're digging, and obviously, no metal, we'll go in there, so I'll just sort the metal out and stuff like that. Find the right day to do it, we don't want a lot of wind when we do that, so, and then we'll just bury that right away and leave the last little bit of the old pit open. He was saying there, so if someone else wants to try to take a hose down or something, yeah, this, or this winter, so. Gravel crushing, as of Thursday last week, we have a hundred and eleven thousand yards on the ground. So they're, they're hoping by Christmas, maybe they should be finishing up.
We were shooting for one forty.
One forty-five, plus or minus.
So they think they're gonna at least reach that now, or?
They're gonna, the way I talked to them last night, is they're going to keep pushing, at least hit our number.
Yeah.
Our one forty-five. You know, as the winter goes on, it gets more expensive for them to mine, so it's, the plant operator said that's the, the higher-ups decision to make, determine whether they're gonna keep going or not.
So do they think they're gonna go well past the one forty-five, though, like even in the spring, like, it's, it's weather that's probably dictating it now?
Yeah.
They're still thinking there's more gravel than that yet, though, or?
Yeah, they're still thinking that there's probably like close to two hundred thousand yards up there, so.
So they're probably planning.
Where are you, where are you doing it at?
Up by Broderick?
Yeah, it's, uh.
Woolbaum.
Yeah, Ken Woolbaum's pit up there.
Pretty much straight south of Ken Woolbaum's pit, so.
So what if they originally think that wasn't there a hundred, and?
I think the original plan was somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand, and then once they got in there, they thought they could probably get some more, well, like, there's numbers anywhere from one fifty to two hundred, and so that was the discussion we were gonna have to have, once they hit that point, just how much further we wanted to go, or, you know. With the scarcity of gravel, it's probably pretty tough to turn down.
Right.
And, you know, and they're, they're already in place, and we have a pretty reasonable contract with both them and Woolbaum, so.
So what if, if they quit for the winter, are they gonna come back?
Well, that's the, the decision to, for the higher-ups to make, I guess. Sometimes they'll just shut down and leave everything there and then start back up in the spring, or, you know, we're also dealing with Ken Woolbaum, it's up to his decision too, if, you know. We're all under the understanding they were gonna mine it out and be done with it, while I talked to him yesterday, not Ken, I talked to the plant manager yesterday, and Ken's been talking to him, and he doesn't really matter, or he doesn't really mind if they don't mine it all out this year, but our goal is to get as much gravel as we can at this price, because it's pretty cheap.
Right, yeah.
But we've got a pretty good contract, not saying, once our contracts are filled, then they can renegotiate if they have to come back.
How long does that last, though?
Sorry, what's that?
Wait, how much, that gravel, how much, how long would that last, I mean, that lasts for a while?
That's a long time, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
It's a mile.
Hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and forty-five, hundred and forty-seven thousand, that's quite a bit of gravel.
If you get up that way, it's hard to miss, it's, it's a big pile, I was up there about, when they probably were about eighty thousand, and it was, it was a big pile, like.
Seem like pile they have by north, I think that was forty-seven thousand, right? That was a big pile.
I, I, I can tell you one thing, a hundred and some thousand yards in a pile, it's just like to see, that's all I can say, you can see it from a long ways up, but you know what you're looking for, it's, it's, so, yeah. I, I mean, it's, it's gonna establish a gravel area for us for a long time in the northern area, which is, 'cause once this is done, I mean, let's just say they hit a hundred and seventy thousand yards and they're done, that, this is the last crush, is what we were told, there's really no more to go after, so. The Woolbaum pit will be basically played out after this, so.
I believe, like, the cattail pile that we had, that cattail bay, I believe that was a hundred thousand yards, wasn't it, crushed?
Roughly a hundred.
So if you ever drove by that one, then.
So what's left on that one above?
Oh. I, I don't even, I guess I don't know, I'd have, we just got the, they towed it this spring, so I'd have to look. I mean, we took some out since then, so, after we're all set, done here, coming up, we'll, we'll re, reshoot our piles, so no, at least use that all of them, so.
Yeah, I think that, that's something we started doing there every year too, but we should continue to do that, so, have them fly or survey any piles, or if they're gonna scan and all that we're doing, but.
Yeah, that way we know what our inventory is, so.
Yep, that's a good idea.
Keep it on that, so. So, doesn't have to make, be made today, this decision doesn't have to be made today, just wanna put this out there that we're, we're gonna work, the, the road department's gonna work on, uh, drafting a policy to bring forth to the commissioners about these utilities services, like rural water, chemilelectric, um, MDU. Right now, we do the, we're taking care of the water treatment plant out there, um, we maintain the initial part of the road during the summertime too. Well, now they have a valve, that's an intake valve down by the river. And we've opened it up the last two or three snowstorms, you know, this year. It's getting tougher, because it's just a kind of a trail down there, so at that point, I don't believe it's the county's responsibility to open it up for them, in an emergency situation, I think it is, but if they wants to keep opening up, I think they should be charged for it. Just like with any utility, if it's an emergency, obviously, the county has the resources to help them out. If they have a substation or something, they need snowplow to, they're like, we're gonna get there Thursday, and it gives us a few days, then I believe we should charge them for it.
You gotta go north on that, you know, you go west on that gravel road, and then it's kind of a trail to the north, you.
It kinda curves around.
Yeah, you take it to the north then.
We go all the way pretty much to the red.
Up to that, yeah, I, I think you're shooting some type of agreement.
Yeah, 'cause I know they have, like, a snowmobile or something to get back there, and I don't think that they have to get back there. I think since the water's down a little bit, they have to monitor it a little bit more, but.
Right, I think the, the reason we're having an issue this year is with the, with the elevation of the water, they have to back flush more, 'cause they're getting a lot more, I think, sand and material in, so. When the water's higher, they probably gotta get back there maybe once a month, and if they have a snowmobile, they get through it, maybe once in the winter, somebody's blasted a trail there for them, and now we're, it's starting to be where they have to get down there once a day, once every two, three days, and every time the winter comes up, then they're calling us, and I don't, I think as a majorly used utility in the area, we've always kinda just helped out, but I think when it starts to become an issue where you're doing it a lot, they really need to have their own snow plan, and if that snow plan is us, we probably should have some kind of agreement with a rate, or they need to hire someone else, or get their own equipment, whatever, so, I think, you know, talking to Skylar, we just talked before, we should have some kind of a policy, just, you know, and, and there probably some leniency on a big, big storm or something, but there should be some kind of a contract with an agreed rate, if they're gonna have us just down there maintaining, even when sun's shining, just 'cause they can't get down there or something, then. 'Cause it's not fair to our guys that aren't getting their routes done, because they're down busting this trail, and, you know, even when it's maybe not such an emergency, just because that's what we've always done, so. So, yeah, I think drafting whatever you guys think for a policy, and then we can kinda reflect on it and make additions or changes, we can work on something together, and.
Was there a lot of pushback from the co-ops?
No, there hasn't been a big pushback, but we're just trying to get ahead of it in case there is a pushback, you know, like, after the water treatment plant, the initial building, that road's in relatively, like, we maintain it during the summertime, well, then after that, it turns into just a trail with the, there's no ditches, and it's a sunken road, so when the wind blows and it blows the snow in there, it gets tough to get that snow out of there, like, uh, let's see, would've been the Friday after the, a week after the first snow, snowstorm, I had to go in there and open it up, and I had to work at it, just to get it back there for a while, so. I mean, I shoved it and opened it up quite a bit, but if we got back-to-back storms, I mean, it'd take a couple hours to get back in there, so. That's a couple hours that we don't really have time for, you know, and then you can't get that, there's only so much, so many places you can put that snow, so. I mean, uh, if we got two back-to-back storms, we'd probably be looking at getting a dozer and then go keep opening up, so, that's where it's gotta.
That's where we just, we felt like the cost should be shared benefits some, that's.
How did this, how did this ever come about, it being the county's responsibility for?
Well, I think it's really the county's responsibility, that's why we need to draft some kind of a policy where we have an agreement in place, 'cause it's always just been, hey, we have to get to that, you know, like, if they don't get to that valve, they can't, they can't treat water.
Yeah, I know, but that, that's their, their problem, whatever.
Agreed, that's what the conversation's about, it really is their problem, but, uh, historically, they haven't had to get to that valve, so they usually had enough time probably between to get someone in there, whether it's their own equipment, or they have a snowmobile, well, this storm hit, or we, their snowmobile was getting repaired, and they don't have the equipment to do it, and they called me, and I, like I told Skylar, like, that's important, this is as important as electricity or anything else, so during that storm, I felt like we should, you know, do our job to make sure that the water flows to the city of Litten and city of Strasburg, and what, half of the residents of the county? But we agreed already on that time that, that, that needs to be ironed out a little better than just always landing on us to make sure that they get back there, so. I think Doug and them are all kind of in agreement, and I'm sure that they realize that we're basically doing them a favor, but it's also, I feel like that's just as much important as the everything else, so we made that decision, but that decision needs to get made by more than just two people, and during an emergency too, that's why we felt the policy was important, so. I told Skylar, put together kind of what he feels is fair to them guys, and then they can bring it to us, and there's things where we either agree or disagree on, maybe have an open conversation with those co-ops, so we're all on the same page, and then we just move forward, I think it's something we can all agree on, so. I think it's a good idea to keep moving forward on it, so. I think it's a good idea to keep moving forward on it, so.
Yeah, and then. I think we should also draft up a policy for these school bus routes and these. Elderly citizens that live out in the county that, you know, we stopped private blading this summer. And then the snowstorm hit, and then people were calling why we turned around and didn't go into the yards, and. Why the school bus routes, the school bus couldn't get in there and stuff like that, so. I guess. Other counties, the school, I mean, it's citizens' responsibility to get their kids to school, not the counties, so. Do we wanna move forward with drafting a policy, or do we wanna just do it this year, and then next summer? Put out a statement saying we're not doing it anymore, or how does the commissioner wanna proceed with this?
Are we doing all the school routes right now?
Uh, right now, we're doing the ones that call, I guess.
Just the ones that call, see, and I I don't quite agree with that, but um, we should, if we're gonna do them, we should kinda do them all. But at the same token, it's kinda hard to quit in the middle of the winter. You know, I agree with you, I mean, if we're gonna do it, I think we should finish out this year, and if we're not gonna do it anymore, let them know ahead of time, we're not doing it anymore. But it's hard to quit right in the middle of the winter, for them to try and find someplace, but it, and then the other thing is. Yeah, we're only doing the ones they're calling in, that ain't really right to the people that aren't calling in, you know?
Well, some of them, some of them don't want it either, they wanna use.
But some of them don't, just don't call in because they fear we're not doing it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, cause I have phone calls already, but.
Well, you can get other people that call that aren't even on the school route, they're just, they got a farm out there, and they wanna get out there, they, they don't know how to get out there, you know? So I don't know if there's something we could draft up as far as charging them so much to go out, open up, when we're all done, or whatever, you know, I don't know.
Well, I think there's two, you know. If we're gonna draft, I mean. Right, you know, snow removal's just different, you know, it's hard, it's, you can get away on a road that hasn't been bladed this summer, but in the winter, it's pretty hard, and so. Like, when we decided we weren't gonna be doing these private drives and stuff like that, that was probably a loose end, we didn't tie up, what we, what we need to do is we need to describe. What is a county road? I mean, and raise, like, what do what do we agree on for the most part? It's probably a section line. It's a part of some kind of an emergency route or a school bus route, which we do the routes with the schools, so we know. And then, how far does a school bus route really count? I mean, do we have to go right up to these folks' front driveway? Or do we go to the nearest section line? Because, I mean, the main reason why you maintain a section line is cause the county has right of way. When you're going on someone's private property, you really, you kinda open yourself up to a lot of liabilities and issues, or you hit their well, cause it's underneath the snow. Or their mailboxes, and it, we're not really like a contracted agency, I don't even know if our insurance policy really covers some of the things. That probably do or don't get done, so. You can't really say like we're, we're not gonna do this or without that, or without describing what it is we're gonna do, you know? Like, some of these driveways that people are calling on, they used to be a school bus route, and they used to be the milk route, and there used to be a mail route. Even though it's a private driveway, they always kinda got services for them reasons. Well, now they don't milk cows, they don't have kids no more. And, you know, and and now they still want those services, and is that really right? Especially like you said, when you're leaving others behind, cause they don't call, and this person just called, and that's the only reason why they get their road bladed is cause they called, that's. I think we need to be a little more specific, and the, the reasoning for that is why I'm kind of against even charging. The reason why is I don't think we wanna be charging, we don't wanna be doing snow removal where we shouldn't be, cause we have a responsibility to the public roadways. And the specific school routes, like the main federally roads and the, you know, and stuff, so I don't, I think it's about. Timing and getting our routes done as soon as possible so they're open, you know, and that's, that's kind of where some of these land. I, you know, if we're gonna make exceptions, or we're gonna do different things too, it, there needs to be an understanding that just because you make a phone call doesn't mean you get service in the next ten minutes. Neither, cause these guys are out halfway through where they really should be, which is probably the federal roads and the emergency routes, and around towns here on the outskirts of town. And trying to get things opened up, so.
Well, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, I think, I think they should do the main roads and stuff like that, there's a lot of people that don't have no kind of. Farm equipment to open up their roads, and they got a farm, they've probably got a few chickens out there, and they gotta get out there, and they can't get out there, so they. They ask, well, can a county, at least when they're done, come and open this up, even if they have to charge a little bit, but I don't love this.
Well, that's probably the right way to do it, and the other thing too is kind of what we had mentioned before, those folks have to have the understanding that they're probably not gonna be first, they're probably going to be last.
I think a lot of them don't understand that, it's just a matter of do, what do we do, how do we do that, you know?
I think that service should still be there, when I look at it, the tax base that there is, it's still the same as it had been in years past. The landmass is still there, and there's hardly nobody left in these rural areas, and we don't take care of any of them. So John Doe dies, Frank dies, there's all these widows that are living out in these countries. They don't know how to run equipment, and we took care of them over the years, and now we're not. It's kind of an insult, I think, to the few people that are left out in the countryside. And it's getting less and less and less every year.
I don't disagree with that either, I I think the main issue, I don't think it's really money, it's time. I mean, that's the big complaint you get, it's not, it's the, you know, oh, it took three days. It took four days, well, there, there's really only two ways to solve that, you either don't do some of the other things we're doing, or you add to the workforce, and that's the only other. Those are the only two options, I guess, so. I mean, you can add to the workforce too, but then that comes with its own problems like anything else, and maybe that's what we need to look into, maybe we are too shorthanded then, if that's the case, cause. I do agree with you too, I mean, when you've been doing something, you know, like you said, snow removal especially, for forty some years, it's hard to just stop it out of nowhere. And it's, it's hard too, because, like you guys said, there are some people that just don't call, they just take care of it, and. Maybe, and then that, sometimes it has nothing to do with the county too, they just know, they gotta get out in a day, and they're not gonna get out in a day, there might be three days till someone, their blade man gets there, so.
Like I said, a lot of them too, they got, if they got a snowblower, they don't want the blade to come in.
Some of them don't want to, but you're right, there are people that actually requested that we don't come in unless it's bad, just to wing it off the sides, and they, they can take care of it. So it's, it's always been kind of a, the blade man's probably known best, cause he knows that guy doesn't call, or this guy does, and. And, you know, but we're, we're gonna have to create some kind of, we're gonna do something different, that's the bottom line, so. Because it's always kind of been a timing issue more than anything, some of these folks maybe have a little bit of an unreasonable expectation of how soon they're gonna get their blade too. Especially when they aren't, they don't fall in one of those main categories of like a school bus route or something, so I don't know, we. It's, it's kind of a tough decision, I don't know if you can really draft a policy that really covers everything, but you can try and at least. Maybe separate a few things, or like you said, maybe create some kind of a charging situation for those issues that we really don't feel are our responsibilities, I mean. Whether it's those co-ops or, you know.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, back then, they just used to go and blast everybody's driveway, go blast out and keep going down the road, but. If we just go and open up the main roads now, and then we have to drive all the way back.
Doesn't make sense.
You know, to blow out this guy, cause, you know what I'm saying, that's.
I know, I have no problems with even the way we've been doing it, but I have a problem with is when we get the insult that, oh, it took two days for the blade to get here. Well, somebody's gonna have to wait, you can't do an entire route, you know, that's where the issue comes in.
People just have to understand.
Well, and that's, that's the issue we're having with that, though, and that's where the com- the calls come. I don't get calls that, you know, it's like, oh, we can't afford to do your route. I get calls that people are, I mean, I get calls that, you know, a school bus got stuck, and it's like, well, it's eight fifteen, and it started snowing at four thirty this morning, the guys aren't gonna get them all open. I mean, that's, there has to be some common ground somewhere, and that's where, I don't think what we're doing is wrong, but according to some people, it's not good enough, and so. Does a change have to be made? Does there need to be more communication? I don't know. Are we really shorthanded? I mean, that's another question. Should we have another blade or two out there?
I don't think we have any less blades than we had twenty years ago.
Well, right at the moment, I think we do, right, cause we're.
There's three, but how many blades are sitting there, Scott?
Uh, right now, there's three, but we just.
Normally, you just want one, right?
What's that?
Normally, you just want one blade set night with backup.
Yeah.
Normally, there's like one, yeah.
Yeah.
But we just had a guy retire, that's why we're.
Right, so I mean, at the moment, we are especially shorthanded, but even, even earlier, we probably were short one guy, so.
We got guys within the ranks that could step, that were blade operators, could step in and fulfill one of those duties that were hired as a road. Operator one time, or a blade operator, sit them in the seat and start blading, pushing stone.
Well, later on here, or I guess we can jump into it right now, I'm gonna, obviously. We had a guy retire, so we, we have an addout to fill that position. We have it in our budget to hire another blade operator, or another equipment operator, I think we should do it, I think we should, if we get two good applicants, or. Whatever, I think we should fill two spots.
Well, I I would agree with you, if we need, if we had the need for it, I think we should too, you know?
Well, if we have the machine set night, it was special, I mean, we always had one spare, so we're always, but I mean, now, like you said, with David now, now we got. Two set night alive, and so.
No guys in the shop, that we could use and sit in a blade or a bug row.
Well, I guess you're getting that Mr. Iblock right now.
No, I'm not just, are there other guys within the facility?
Well, I have Michael Wickenizer that I can, that, when I get some time, we can train him to do it, so, I mean, as a fill-in. But we're all, we're shorthanded year round, not just snow removal and stuff like that, so I believe we should hire another guy, it's in our budget, and I believe. If the commissioner allows it, I think we should hire an additional guy, so.
And you have that job listed right now, though, right?
Right now, we have it open, just for, since we had a guy retire, so.
Yep.
We're running, we're currently running the app.
Was there any applicants at all yet, you know?
Well, it's pretty early, I think, when we listed it, about a week ago, so I mean, it's, it's got to run for.
We have one so far.
It's have to run for thirty or sixty days, I think, or something like that.
Uh, two weeks, I believe, I think it, I mean, it hasn't, we have it till the fifteenth or till the position filled, so.
I thought you had it, had it running kind of all the time, didn't you?
We did, Francis wanted, and then all of a sudden, you said, yeah, take it off, so.
We probably should do that again for a while.
So you don't have nine on rec, I mean, no, anybody application though, right now?
One.
Just one?
You know, there was an applications previously when Francis was this road superintendent, he told me, so I don't have those anymore. I think they're probably out of the shop, I don't hope any of those are still interested.
Well, that's what I was wanting, if there were any, or weren't there anything left?
Well.
Yeah.
So do we, do we wanna hire another additional operator after this?
Well, I think if you get multiple applicants, and we have a scenario where there's more than one good applicant, we could probably, I mean, I think we should consider it, I think that. Depends on how many applicants we get, I suppose.
I was gonna say, see, who you get, and we'll compare, I, you know, if they're qualified, I think we should.
So if we don't get, I have a question, when you, you want me to continue wanting to add after next Friday, or will you want me?
I would say, see how many apps, cause you got, you don't have very many apps, that's how I would, so.
We had to extend it, yeah.
And I don't know, how many places are you advertising?
Where am I all advertising? Um, on the NDA CO website, on Facebook, on our website, and then the Evans County record. I think it's a tough market right now.
Is that, is that where you normally go?
Well, what, that one year, we went statewide, I think we spent like six hundred and some dollars winning every county newspaper. We didn't, I didn't, we didn't get any money, you know, they were just locals.
I know up in Goodrich, they let two operators go. I talked to a board member, just happened to run into this person, never knew her, but she was on the board up in Goodrich, and they let two operators go. That was his fault, so they're looking for two guys too.
They didn't give you the reason why they let them go, did you?
I didn't ask her.
Yeah, I mean, we're just gonna, I mean, we're at the mercy of the public to wanna come work at the county, I guess.
Right, well, like you said, I think you let that ad run for at least the minimum week, and see how many applicants there are, if there's enough to interview, we can, you know. We can always interview and then put it out again afterward, I mean, if there's three, four applicants, we might take our opportunity, interview, and see where it goes, you know? And then, can always relist it too, I mean, can interview after two weeks if we got any applicants, and try and bring somebody on, and then bring them on again, we don't have to wait until we have ten applicants, so.
Yeah, the two, we get somebody in here to.
Right, so I would say we probably need to let it run for another week, see what the situation's like, and see if we wanna set up interviews, and then we can obviously relist it again afterwards. If we don't hire someone, or if we do, and we wanna bring someone else on, so. Yep, I'd say just continue for another week, and then we'll.
Look for a good one.
Well, yeah, that's what we're good, that's what we're.
Call your buddies, call your friends, tell everybody.
Well, I, there's a couple guys retiring out of Burley County, I know, but.
Yeah.
They wanna keep working, they just want a different pace. So our money's there, I think, I believe our money's. You know, our pay scale for the new hires are there, cause we had to, I mean, obviously, we revised it. But that doesn't leave our existing operators with much choice, so. Um, it's in our budget, cause I budgeted for it, I, I'm requesting an additional two percent pay increase. For the existing operators that we have out there, cause that'll offset, cause if, if we find a good one, you're gonna pay. And that doesn't leave much for the guys that have been there for quite a few years. It's not gonna be a whole lot of difference in their pay scale, so. I think we should, it's in our budget. I believe we could increase them all by two, an additional two percent, and we'd be, the budget will sustain that. Pretty easily.
And that was with the hiring of one person or two?
Well, the one person that, cause the, he was already in our budget.
So you had it in your budget to already hire one person, and then with the retirement?
So we could hire two out of the budget.
Yeah.
And you wanted two percent increase on all the employees of the road department, you're saying, correct?
Correct, an additional two percent.
Over and above what they got initially, when you did the, the salary, this fall? Were you, cause you're looking at what, a three and a half or the three percent?
Everybody got three percent across.
It would be five percent total.
It's pretty fat, isn't it?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think so, it passes off to be about twelve thousand dollars.
Well, I think what we'll have to do is, I think we'll have to evaluate our hiring situation first, and see where that is, and then see where the budget lands, and. I mean, historically, we haven't given raises outside of the budget cycle, so I mean, I don't wanna start doing that, I mean. But I think it could be considered, once we, you know, fill these positions we're looking at filling first, and make sure that we don't run into a budgeting issue with that, so. I think that's probably item three or four on the to-do list with them.
Well, even if we, even if we hired an additional one, we're still not gonna hurt our budget, well, we have budget for it.
Well, I guess I'd have to reevaluate that too, cause I don't know, I mean, when we looked over the budgets, I don't know if we seen a bunch of extra in there, so that's why I'm kinda curious. We'll have to look and see where that part was in there, so.
So what's start, starting salary for that, for the road?
Right now, we have it anywhere from twenty to twenty-four dollars an hour. So.
And you said there were a couple from Burley County that, that retired, that would, they'd be interested, or not?
I don't know, I just know them, cause they used to work there.
Oh, but they wouldn't wanna work full-time?
Depends on what, what their blade style is, I guess.
Don't fill out applications if they're interested, I guess, let's.
I'm putting the, I'm putting the word out, like.
Okay, I guess we'll see what happens.
It must be all over, they're short, cause I know a guy from the city of Bismarck up there, and they're looking for help too, and they got a pretty good pay scale too.
Yeah.
But they can't get anybody to take that.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, what, what do they pay up there?
At the city of Bismarck?
No, city of Bismarck, that's twenty-three or twenty-four dollars an hour, they start plus all the curves and everything else, it's kinda like here, pretty much.
What's Burley, I'm sure the same, baby?
Uh, they're a little more than us.
Well, I think one thing Burley has, Burley's got a, Burley's got a pay scale that I understand, so that's the one thing, getting back to where we're talking about here, that Evans County needs to continue to work on. Is that, we've never really had any kind of a situation where you have guys level up, you know, qualify for raises, or maybe whenever, it's always just kind of been a. As you see it, or as some, and that's probably not been a good policy either, so that's where, even going forward, I told Skylar himself too, that's something. Use it apartment head, need to be probably working with the others on, I mean, it's your apartment, you know, all you wanna see guys excel or move forward, or, you know. Model it after another county if you want, and bring it forward, cause if the expectation by the department heads is for the county commissioners to create this pay scale. Alongside their other responsibilities, it's not gonna get done, so. I mean, if you're dissatisfied with the pay or the way things are done, then create something that you'd like to see, and I don't, I don't think anybody here is not gonna be receptive of that. In some fashion, I mean, not gonna agree on everything, but I think we could come up with a, with a scalable deal, or anywhere. You can be satisfied how your department's around, and it is your department, so I think you should spearhead it and, and bring it forward that way.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we sure can, but I'm just, when we get the scale done, then the percentage is gonna blow up, it's gonna look like a big number.
Well, I think that's, I mean, if it's something that's fair, and fits into the model of both our budget and, you know, kind of the market, I don't, I don't see why it's not gonna be at least. Review, and I don't think anybody here is not willing to at least. Well, I think that's, I mean, if it's something that's fair and fits into the model of both our budget and, you know, kind of the market, I don't, I don't see why it's not gonna be at least reviewed, and I don't think anybody here is not willing to at least look at it, so. I think you gotta create something that we'll look at and kinda go from there. Comes best from you guys, because you're the ones that'll have to live under, so.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking for the additional two percent now.
Well, I think it's hard to accept a two percent raise of there, like, when we don't feel like we have any other structure involved, I mean, and even with the budget, I mean, we reviewed the budget, went over it, I don't. I'm just kinda confused where that money, what line item that was even under, so that's why I'm just saying, we're gonna have to review it and go forward with it, I mean, I don't think that's a decision that's probably gonna get made today, so. And I'd like to see what happens after the hiring of, you know, one or even two additional people, and where that's gonna land in the budget, how things land, I mean. These decisions gotta have some oversight and review, so. I like where you're coming from, I don't mind that you're asking for it, but it's, you know, I guess my personal feeling that that's gonna take some more review, so, that's my answer, I guess.
Mister Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Because you guys only meet once a month, so, let's say they would get three applicants for next week Friday, what do you, how do you wanna handle them? You guys want Skylar and a commissioner, a couple commissioners interviewed, you guys want a special meeting and you all do it? Do you want Pam involved, do you want questions?
Special meeting.
A special meeting?
Because we, we can't wait for the next meeting. If you get two or three, yeah, we need to, need to interview, trying to get somebody in here.
And schedule again, a, a special meeting, you guys interviewing?
Whether you want the commissioners to interview, you want to form a committee, because I know it's done in both ways.
I guess for that, that part doesn't matter.
Because I know when we did like a hiring committee before, usually it was the superintendent and probably two commissioners.
I would say it should be the full board.
Yeah, well, if you wanna do the full board, that's fine, you just have to have a special meeting, so.
And then you wanna have questions again?
I would say you'd have to score it properly, yes, because like you said, you may have someone who qualifies for, for a preference, whether that's even veterans or however, so you better make sure you do it the right way, so. Yeah, I would say tally the applicants, and then we'll schedule a special meeting and we'll all interview them.
So do we need Pam binder then?
Pardon me?
Do we need Pam binder then, or what?
Well, I sent you the questions we used before, were you okay with those?
I guess I didn't, I didn't have time to look at them yet.
I can email them to Pam and have her go through, and if she, she can make any adjustments, or?
Yeah, we can, but, so you guys wanna have a full meeting just to interview the applicants?
I think it should be, say, the full board, if they've gotta say, why shouldn't it be just two board members and the other three guys sit on the outside, not knowing?
Oh, I, I think we could review it, but I, I mean, I don't think any other county out here has a full meeting to, to interview people. I mean, I think that, that's gonna be the, I think the, I mean, that's subject to every answer they ever give is subject to open record, then.
Sure. That's my opinion.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I think that's gonna hurt our application process, I mean, there's not a lot of people that are gonna wanna sit through an open meeting and.
Well, I don't know, I would, with an interview process.
Well, I don't think it's open meeting for that, is it? I don't think it's open meeting for that.
Is it open reading, meeting, Joe, for interview of individuals, I don't think it would be, would it be?
I honestly don't know, I mean, a lot of what, what you would ask on background would be confidential, so it's probably a meeting closed, I would guess.
I know when we did, when we did some of the other interviews, I think, me and you and Leonard, right, when we interviewed Cody down there, we just went down to the shop and interviewed him. We told the rest of the commissioners what it was like, who he was like, and went from there, but. I mean, that was something that, if you got certain districts, whoever is in that district, you know, you were commissioned in that district, you, I mean, that was fine too, but whatever.
I'm thinking, you know, there should be at least a couple commissioners and Skylar, and, you know. Because you have the whole board, not against it, but at the same token, all the different positions here, when they hire somebody behind them, we don't have the whole board yet, you know? So we're kind of setting, you know, but I, I, I agree, it should be a couple commissioners, I would.
Well, I've been a part of three, and it's always just been two commissioners, it's usually the chairman and then whatever commissioners in that district. Unless the chairman is the one in that district, we just pick another guy, well, because I've done an interview in the Strasburg shop, had an interview here at the courthouse, and done an interview at the Hazelton shop, actually. So, I mean, that's, and I have no problem either way, it don't really matter, the only thing is, like you said, we gotta make sure that we're. If it's an interview with a whole commission, and it's gonna be something that's subject to open record or something or not, then we better make sure we do it, but. Otherwise, that's reasoning for always just doing two commissioners, is then it's not really an open meeting, you can meet them wherever, I mean, whether it's a restaurant, or the shop, or wherever, so. That's historically how it's always been done, but doesn't mean it has to be done that way, so, I won't clarify that, per se, no one will.
I mean, if you're meeting with a quorum, and it's about public business, it's an open meeting, so, no, it's an open meeting, the question would be then, could you enter an executive session and close the meeting?
Right.
I would have to research that a little bit, so.
Sure.
But you'd certainly have to hold convenient, an open meeting, and then if you can close it, you have to go through that process, detail, the authority that you have that allows you to close the meeting, and then go through that closed session, so. It would add some complications at the minimum, and then, whether or not it's open, I guess I would have to do some further research on, on whether or not you can close that, so.
So maybe Pam binder, but no.
Well, like you said, that's something I think we'll leave up to Joe, and Joe can either, Joe, Joe can look up himself, or consult Pam binder on it, or however you wanna do it, to. See what the right way to do it is, because, like I said, we historically haven't, haven't done that mission.
Well, the other board members, then, if you just have two, do they have the discretion to ask questions after the fact on these guys' background?
Well, we can go, give you guys a list of questions that you guys wanna answer, and then we can, myself and two board members, we can go through and score them, and then. You guys can have a special meeting and review the score sheets, and then.
See, what we did there before, was just, we hired them, okay?
I guess I'm the department head, so it should be really my final, pretty much final say on whether they're a good operator or not.
Well, I would think you, the board.
Well, because I think it's, like I said, historically, when we had the two commissioners, and I think the last interview I did was, it was me, and I believe Leonard and Francis, and we interviewed down at the Strasburg shop. And we interviewed the person, and I don't think we made a decision for a day or two or something, I mean, we kinda turned the sheets and we scored it, and the highest score, you know, I think we inter, interviewed more than one person. And then we had the highest, we just scored them like we've been doing, because you, I think you have to score it, if you're gonna do more than one individual, otherwise. You're, you're violating law by either not giving veterans preferences or whatever scenario, so you can't just, you know, do it any other way, so. I mean, basically, we formed a three-person hiring committee is what we did, so, and that's historically how it's been done, but, like I said, I have no problem with it. The only other thing I will say is, I think probably the two-person or three-person committee probably had a little more flexibility with that person, if they're already working a job, or if you have a. Board convene, you know, it's kinda hard to match times where the, you know, it may be three in the afternoon that's convene, it might be ten in the morning, that's hard to say, so. I guess, Joe, if you wanna look into that, you can kinda see what kind of restrictions or rules would be a part of that, or how it's normally done, or.
Yeah.
I can reach out to Pam binder too, and just kinda ask her her opinion on how things are done too, and see if that's something that would be a good or bad idea, or what the reasoning to be, so. Check into it with her and, uh, report back, I guess, we got about a week at least, so we wanna decide, I suppose, so.
Yeah.
Let's schedule meetings, we're gonna start.
Okay.
Okay, and then the only last thing we, I guess I have on our, the docket is. Uh, to the commissioners, on November seventeenth, the selection committee, consistent of Chairman Magrum, Commissioner Averyly, myself, and. Mister Ibock conducted interviews with the, at the Evans County Courthouse for engineering services for a project BRJ dash zero zero one five zero two one. We interviewed three engineering consultants, Moore Engineering, SRF Consulting Group, and Wold Engineering. After completing the interview, interviews, it is our recommendation that Wold Engineering will provide the best services needed for Evans County. So this is for that, uh, bridge replacement, that's funded through the state. It's a process we have to go through, we also have to go through, after they design it, during the construction phase, we're gonna have to go through and. Redo the whole process for the consultants, for the construction on it also. And these are federal rules, federal guidelines. The bid will hopefully happen in November twenty twenty-three, so the project will be slated for twenty twenty-four. So this is just for the design of it. The following orders that they were ranked were Wold Engineering at top, Moore Engineering was the second, and SRF Consulting Group was third, so. You guys, I believe, all have a letter that in the, in your packet.
So anybody have any questions about that process, or any other?
The one question I have is that I, I think there should be an email sent out to all the commissioners just to let them know what's going on. You know, that this would be, you know, that, no problem with two whoever, the two who are meeting with them, it's just that. You get calls, or why they meet, and then you're, you know, you're not there, so, I just think a meet email should, oh, yeah, they're meet because they're discussing with this, you know, there should be just an email sent out. This is what we're doing this day, and go from there, so the other commissioners all know about it.
Yeah, that's reasonable enough. I think the reasoning for, the way it was done that way is because I was the current chairman, and I believe the bridge is in Downs District, right? So that was kind of the reasoning behind it, so.
Yeah, I, like I said, I have no problem.
Yeah, no, that, that's, there's nothing wrong with that, so, going forward, we'll just make sure we make the board aware that those interviews are taking place, so.
This email that we got with the county bridge program, are you taking care of that, to document all these bridges that need attention within the county, or is that the commissioners' responsibility?
Well, it's the state?
The state, yeah.
Overseas, yeah.
Does all the inspections on it, required.
They come out after the fact, after you've been playing these bridges, correct?
No, they're inspected two years regardless whether, what the conditions are, then they send out, or, then they, they have a report that then they send up us.
I believe it's either the state or the federal government has a requirement that we have our bridges inspected on an annual or biannual basis, or I believe it's annual basis, right?
It's every two years, unless there's a, a critical binding, and then it can go to every.
Yeah, and we, we give you a contract with another engineering firm, or the DOT did offer us that service, so we're in contract with the DOT, and I believe that's a two-year contract we go with them, they. They have a specific rate they just charge for all of them, and then they inspect it, bring us those findings, and then, so that's our process, so, yeah. And then John keeps a ruddy tally of all their, like, he's got a spreadsheet that has, I believe there's. In the neighborhood of forty bridges that qualify for the inspection, and then he keeps all those reports and the, and the grades and all that stuff, so actually, John kinda manages it on our side, this group, but that's what. Go ahead, Mike.
There is an open enrollment right now to apply for future projects, and I, I have visited with John, and there, there's a few bridges he's, he asked me to look into for the application process. And, you know, so if there is a bridge in one of your districts you guys are concerned about, or maybe talk to John and Skylar, and, you know, we can, we can put an application in for that.
So, yeah, that's just the second round of funding.
Yeah, they'll rather be a twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five project, it'll be, you know, down the road a little bit, but, um, they're, they're asking for future projects.
The deadlines in January, though, right, for the application?
Yeah, yeah.
Dan, do you know Microvenius, and, okay, so that's Microvenius from Old Engineering?
Yep, and John Martin's will eat.
Yeah, they're with Old Engineering.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm using myself.
No, that's all right, I should have probably introduced you first, so, uh, okay. So, yeah, we'll need a motion to approve to move forward with Old Engineering for the, uh, for the bridge project that we discussed.
I'll make a motion for it.
Commissioner Averyly makes a motion to move forward with Old Engineering for a bridge project to discuss, so second that motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holmes, it's any more discussion with bridge project.
Which bridge is this now?
So this is the bridge, uh, be by, uh, Larry Lyer, it's the one that we replanted about two years ago. That's that, that bridge that we've been doing some work on, now we get replacement on it, so. Not hearing any discussion, all those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Old Engineering is hired for the design phase of said project. How about the utility permit for pump electric to install this jacketed cable in intersection of Third Avenue, New York Southwest and Ninety Street Southwest?
No comment, I put the comment.
Okay. And then, um, maintenance certification for county federal aid construction, I believe we sign that every year, do you have Adam Octor?
Yep, I'll pass him, I'll do it. And then that outstanding invoice that's on there, Dan, Aaron Elm. Curry Winds Construction, we built them November of twenty twenty-one for disposing seven loads of concrete out of the shop. And we billed it three hundred and fifty dollars, and we've been sending them bills, sending them bills, and John's been trying to call them, and they haven't been answering the phone, so I got ahold of them the other day, and, um. He said they owing dumped two loads up there, and that's why he's not paying this bill, so. He'd be willing to pay a hundred dollars, which is fifty dollars a load, so I need to know what you guys want me to do.
So how did he come to seven loads, then?
He said he, he doesn't know, Ethan told me he didn't know, he said, well, I never dumped seven loads, why I'm being billed for that, I don't know. John gave us a bill and told us it was seven loads, and when I called John and told him about this, he just kinda chuckled a little bit, he thinks they dumped more than two, but. So I don't know what to do, and you know, and I can't put it on his taxes, because he doesn't own any properties, so.
Well, I guess we, we need to find out how many loads they dumped.
Well, it's obviously before my time, but I don't know how you'll find out how many loads they dumped, because I, we pushed up our concrete pile probably ten times since then, so. My recommendation, not that it means much, but I would just, if it, charge them the two loads and we'll just do a way better job of documenting next time something like this happens. It's, now it's a he said, that he said.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's always kind of the Neoner system out there with that, with the disposing of concrete, because we've utilized it for crushing and fast, so it's. But it's not exactly like a gift to us either, because crushing concrete's not free, and it's not like it's this indispensable product that we absolutely need, it's kinda been more for. We utilize some riprap out of it and crush the rest, so. But, um, yeah, I would say, you know, we'll probably have to maybe, I don't know, get better about it, like you said, maybe go to some kind of ticketing scenario or something if it's gonna be a problem.
So how much was the total bill?
Three hundred and fifty, fifty dollars a load, and they were billed for seven loads.
It's all but high, I think.
Yeah, I'd say with this one, probably just charge them for the two bolts and just, we're just gonna have to.
Take it as a verdict, or?
Yep, well, we're just gonna have, like you said, we're not gonna let anybody dump unless we have some kind of ticket saying that we verified it, and I guess they have a problem with that, or then now we'll have to find another place to dump, I guess. It's the Neoner system until the Neoner goes away, right, so, okay. Okay, and we did the approval for the engineering firm, and, uh. So I have the maintenance certification for, you looked at that with the federal aid construction, huh?
First time hearing the word.
Yeah. I believe it's just the agreement that the state said we're gonna follow all the rules of the federal aid program.
You're gonna maintenance the federal aid roads that, that you got money for.
Yeah. And follow all their processes when we do cop shares and rules and all that, so. Oh, I guess we can be going for that, take care of that later, so. Old Engineering here on the agenda for, that was ten forty-five, sorry about that.
No, no problem, we just had some calendars.
Dan, Skylar, have you been, unless you have something else?
I do have a card, if you want.
Okay.
This is, uh.
You want me back after a long, for the long interview, okay?
Yeah, if you want.
Be sure.
So there's nothing else to need me right now?
I do not believe so, you're free to go.
Okay. I'm Microvenius, I don't.
Pleasure meeting you guys, good.
Yes, I'm John Martin.
Martin?
Out of our Bismarck, so, just wanted to drop on some calendars and say hi. Just wanted to drop on some calendars and say hi.
Good.
Yep, you do. All right.
Since I got you here, though.
Yep, for sure.
Do you guys have anything to add on this, you know, I see here you kind of gave us a little bit of a handout on the, it looks like the proposals for the, what we call the Wobom pit over in the the couch crossing here, so.
Oh, I think that was a preliminary, maybe the preliminary hydraulics, I think.
Solicitation of use. That deal by Kenny Wobom?
Yeah, above the.
That bridge or that culvert deal?
Yeah. So what, I mean, the intention here, I'm not trying to put you on, so I did, I have this handout here. So you guys, it looks like you gave us like a project location and a, looks like a bunch of addresses of.
Oh, yeah, we sent out solicitation of use to, uh, to, um, government agencies. That's part of the process in to get clearances.
Sure.
You have to send out solicitation of use letters to Fish and Wildlife, the Corps, um, you know, places like that. So that that's part of the process. We started some of that environmental work on those on those crossings.
Because, Marles, Dave, you heard an update or got anything on the thirty-dollar funds?
Yes, I did get something from Danielle Feskey the other day. It sounds like it it's gonna be pretty promising for us for one point three million.
Because I think, you know, I guess just to bring you up to speed, Dan, uh, so we're looking at possibly doing either one or both of these projects.
Okay.
Uh, most likely box culverts and then probably some road modifications to make sure we're right in some rounds and making sure this fits the way it should. But, uh, those are kind of the two priorities that we were hopefully gonna use some of the thirty-dollar funding for, because I know ballparking and rough estimates was probably gonna be a half a million dollars piece, and we're looking at getting upwards of a million dollars in the parade out, so.
But what about Northern Improvement? Aren't they up there that bid also? Or isn't that Northern Improvement?
No. Fisher Industries, and then, um, what happens sometimes is Fishers and the Woboms are gonna own whatever aggregate that we don't purchase, and then they sell it to. It might be Northern Improvement this year, might be Mariner, might be, you know, Knife River. So they, I think they're kind of selling out of that pit, you know, so it'd probably be mostly, you know. I know the state does, you know, if they ever pay a project in the area, they got fines for the asphalt and stuff. They purchased it and stuff, but it's kind of more, uh, I don't think anybody really has any privileges to that pit other than us, the Woboms and Fishers at this point.
Okay.
That's to my knowledge, so.
I thought Knife River, then we're in, but they're not.
Well, I know there's been multiple crushing projects and stuff, but I think that historically has gotten sold like from the Woboms to some, so I don't I don't know if anybody ever had really any rights to it other than us and the Woboms and probably Fishers now, but, um. But, yeah, because we did kind of, you know, I think we maybe even reached out before to the state on it, but it doesn't qualify as a bridge, so that's where they didn't.
It was not available, or because it's not a technically a bridge.
Yeah, it's a Texas crossing, and it doesn't really qualify to any structure that they do cost share funding on, so that's kind of where they stopped at that, but.
Well, that that parade out, but what what do we all do with that? Is that just all?
I think you can do any problems.
Yeah, I believe, you know, any kind of road construction.
It doesn't have to be far from the market either, does it?
No, no.
Okay.
And I don't believe there's a time limit on it either, that was the other thing I think.
Yeah, I don't think.
There is some red tape, we'll probably have to look into a little bit and stuff, and.
Yeah, it's best to create a separate account for it so you can track your expenses and stuff in case they get lost. Yeah, yeah.
And then we also, the one thing we maybe didn't hire now for sure, at least at the last time we talked, was if we have to follow the same process we did on that bridge, or we have to interview for multiple stages of the project, or we can just, you know, put it out for bids, hire it, do it, I don't know, we gotta make some price and clarifications. And there's probably some stuff through the legislative session that might even come up.
Yeah, it's my understanding, it's it'll just be all local. Um, there there is no, you know, federal requirements as far as that goes because it's state funded. So it's basically, you know, up to the county and how they want to proceed with that.
So if there if there isn't those kind, if there aren't those kind of restrictions, especially with the difficulty with getting a box culvert, do you think, you know, like moving forward with it, if we should start looking at maybe sizing one and possibly getting them on order? Or what do you think?
Well, I I still, I think the best way to do it would be to bid it and and let the contractor, you know, you know, go through that process and let the contractor, yeah.
And then get the materials and stuff right on, okay.
I would hope by the time that's bid, I would hope things get better, but I guess you never know.
Because we're kind of roughly being told it's upwards of a year right now, right?
Yeah, yeah. If you don't bid them in November, typically you might not get them constructed that summer.
Right, so the likelihood of us even probably getting them done next year is probably pretty slim.
Well, hopefully we can meet November bid opening. Um, what we'd like to do, like on that Wobom pit is, uh, you know, right now for surveying, it's not cost effective because the ditches are full and we'd have to shovel to get the ground. So we do have LiDAR data, we might put a preliminary, kind of preliminary design together for the grading, because that one will take some grading potentially, and present that to you guys to see if that's what you'd like to proceed. So we can kind of get a a plan, um, on how to proceed with that one in in particular.
Considering with that one, there's kind of some road hazards we could probably.
Yeah, it's just not ideal.
Picks up too.
They kill and and take curbs and it's, uh.
Well, I think if we do that, I think we need to consider, you know, I hate to just do the box culvert and then leave the old crummy road with the curve that everybody hates or something, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, I think I I don't, I think our interest is to still continue with them as much as possible, so.
Okay.
I mean, for whatever process you want to keep going on, I guess at this point, I think.
Yeah, we got cultural and wetlands, you know, obviously that can't take place till spring, but we've we've got ahold of them and.
Sure.
Got them ready to go on the sets available.
Okay, so you're gonna get started on the bridge projects then, right away, too?
Yeah, well, you know, we have to go through the process now. County will have to submit their paperwork, we'll have to submit our our estimated hours to the DOT, and then they'll get a contract put together and and have, um, I believe the chairman signing on the contract. And after that is when we can officially start. So that'll probably, likely probably happen around the first of the year, you know. It takes a little bit of time.
Mike, what paperwork do we have to send in?
They'll, you'll you'll have to, they'll want PDFs of the proposals, um, the rating forms. I think John, you know, he, I think he's familiar with that.
Okay, he says, we send those right to Brian then?
Yeah, right to Brian, yep. And if you got questions, just give me a call and, or Brian, then I can help you out there.
Yeah, because John checked out the scoring sheets and all that, so he should have all the.
Yep, they'll want a list of the questions and all that stuff. Lots of paperwork.
Well, it's worth it when they're talking about papered bridge and that's.
It's a, should be a hundred percent federally funded, that's what we're doing, so.
Yep, a little bit of paperwork is a small risk to pick.
Well worth it, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, you got to call just so you can sign it, right? Because the neighbor that's right there, you know, there's for the ice jams and stuff like we were talking before.
Is there ice jam, because, I mean, have they had ice jams there?
I think in the past they probably have.
Okay.
They were concerned about that now, what kind of bridge you guys gonna put in there? And I said, well, they're going through the process, but I don't really know.
Yeah, id ideally, if, I mean, typically, ideally, a box would be, um, the best, you know, if there's ice jams.
Because there's two farms right there, you know.
Yeah, yeah. We'll make sure that, you know, the road would overtop before, you know, hopefully we'd have any impacts there. But we'll we'll look at that when we do the hydraulics on it and see what's.
Well, and there's oversight from the both DOT and Corps of Engineers, so, I mean, there's multiple levels on that, so. Okay, any more questions or any issues with old engineering? Tom, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.
Take care.
Oh, there's nothing on the agenda here before lunch except the miscellaneous, so we might as well finish with that. So we have a renewal for a building permit for Bobby and Savannah Kramer, a building residence on lot one, pre-conditioned, section eighteen, township one thirty-two, range seventy-six.
Why is it a renewal?
Uh, probably because they didn't get it done in the one-year restrict, they have a one-year limit for building permit. They haven't got it down, so. I would assume that's the reason for applying the renewal, yeah.
So you want a motion on that, or?
Yeah, well, usually, I don't know, is there anything on there, Gary, that's different, or is it?
Is this the one, this, now, there's two of them going up up there, is this the one closest to the road?
No, I believe that's one in, the first one.
He's the one farther to the west, yeah. Couches to the east.
Couches to, couches to the east, this is the one to the west, okay.
Yeah.
Couch is the one into the east?
Yeah, just next to it.
All right, well, I'm backwards.
Bobby's is, the sticks are up and the roof is on, you know, lighter is on. It's not shaded on the living quarters and the walls.
Yeah, I would imagine with not being able to get materials or contractors in time or something, the setbacks were all fine. That was never an issue, right?
Yeah, well, I know it was dead when we originally hit it.
Right, but I mean.
Yeah, they're far enough off.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve table or deny a renewal for building permit for Bobby and Savannah Kramer. I think we have a motion to do.
Do you make a motion?
I.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Materia to approve the renewal for Bobby and Savannah Kramer is our second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holmes. Is there any more discussion, the renewal for building permit for Bobby and Savannah Kramer? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
That that's good for a year now, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Any opposed? Do I sign the renewal, Marles, or underneath their signature? Because it looks like it still has.
Just sign a date somewhere.
Okay, because it was already signed before, so. Right? And, uh, county deeds.
Okay, those two properties in Strasburg that we took for delinquent taxes. Um, I asked the city of Strasburg, they want to purchase them for a dollar, and they said yes, so.
They would?
Yes, so those county deeds is to deed to the Strasburg City.
Would everything tax, is there any left today?
Well, those are the ones we took back.
Oh, those are, okay.
Delinquent taxes.
And then nobody bought them.
Nobody bought them at the sale in November?
Yeah.
And you guys told me last month to offer them to the cities, and I did.
Okay.
I don't know, does the city act on one last night, Joe, or do you?
They talked about it, uh, I believe they are gonna buy, yeah.
Okay, because she never said anything to me.
She runs out of the office, she's out of space.
Oh.
Where's it exactly located?
It's in Strasburg?
Yeah, that, what, that town, for our next Adam fans. In Strasburg. Adam fans, north side of town, I can pull up on the map and get a little. I was just kind of curious where it was, yeah.
Those are those deeds for those guys at the city stadium?
For the, for the church, I believe.
I heard it's Sanger, you know, right?
Yeah, Sanger.
It's still less.
Yeah, Sanger's to the west.
Sanger's still less, I thought.
Sanger's to the west, three, three Sangers, and then to the east there's that longer there.
So the city, they, the city would take that too, huh?
Pardon me?
The city would take that one too?
Strasburg?
Yeah.
Both deeds are there?
Yeah.
Who owns that one?
Who owns that one again?
Tim Mosswell?
Yeah.
Did I even want him? He tried to sell. Only one fell through, he says, but.
And the other one was on Main Street, right?
Yeah.
Entertain, entertain a motion to approve table or deny the two county deeds that the city of Strasburg is taking for a dollar each. Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve county deeds to the city of Strasburg is our second in motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holmes, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deeds approved. Next is a plat for Derek Wall for track A in the south half of the northeast quarter of section twenty-eight, township one thirty, range seventy-four, fifth principal meridian, Emmens County.
I don't see a problem with this one, it's northeast of A, a couple miles, thirty-five acres, just going around the farm gate.
It's basically just a subdivision of a.
Defense.
Going off the yard.
You're splitting off a track, but it's, yeah, obviously thirty-five acres, so. Shouldn't be an issue with anything come board and just.
I'll make a motion to pay it up.
Motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the plat for Derek Wall. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holmes. Any more discussion on the plat for Derek Wall? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Plat approved. Is there a building permit?
That one there, Aaron, um, Denise told me about the many different paperwork, and so we don't, we won't be approved of that.
Well, it's approved pending their paperwork getting in.
Well, there's a lot to, uh, well.
Yeah, that's the one in the well.
That's up on the old wall, I think.
Well, I won't sign it, I'll just keep it to tell.
What do you have?
Well, I mean, I don't see any problems with the plat itself, so what's the paperwork?
No, I'm done with the building permit number eight.
Oh, oh, okay, Derek Walls is fine.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
When you start saying building permit, then I'm sorry, that's a major.
Well, okay, so. The building permit for CHS Strasburg for a billboard sign north of Strasburg on corner of eighty-eighth street, southeast and highway eighty-three, which apparently is still under review.
Yeah, they, Denise just brought it to me yesterday afternoon and said they had me fill out that for the permit. I'm gonna have to give you a rough idea of where it's gonna be, and it'll be outside of the easements and everything like that. I think they still have to do a state permit because it's within six hundred feet of the state highway. But it's, it'll need the county, I suppose, anyways.
It'll be on the north side?
Yeah.
They'll be in red.
They have a small one in the right now.
Yeah, it's small, so, and then there, in our, um, ordinance. I want to talk to Joe about that too, maybe. I just noticed it this morning, um, there's square footage, like maximum square footage signing, you know, like two hundred square feet, if it's in a commercial district, I don't have it in front of me right now, but. But that's, we only have that information yet, I'll believe the signs will be.
Do you see any other sign restriction in our ordinance book?
Yeah, about the size, I can go grab one of those.
I got mine here, though. All signs shall conform with the regulations contained in chapter twenty-four dash seventeen of North Coast Century Boulevard, half of the wall.
Yeah, that's where state.
Two hundred square feet.
Okay, so two hundred square foot signs in all industrial or commercial districts, is that what that is? Or is that a culture?
That's, that's commercial, but. I think it's like, it should be, because we don't have, I mean, that recreation or industrial fund square feet. I guess we put an A because they're not one for just a, yeah.
I think we had that discussion before, we really don't have any commercial or industrial zone districts, really. There's tax that way, but they're not zoned that way. zone districts really. There's tax that way, but they're not zoned that way, right? So it's pretty much ag or residential for the, the recreation, they're not even residential, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that one fifty? They have to do a permit if it's less than six hundred feet, but ask you outside of the, which is a hundred.
What you're talking about, you're talking about square footage?
What's that?
With the state, the state must have a restriction on square footage.
They know, I've read that since we go...
Oh, you did?
They know, it was all about distance from state highway.
So it didn't matter what size it was?
Not a state, that I seen.
Well, I, I guess that if you were gonna make an argument for something, it says a hundred square foot non-animated sign which may be eliminated but not flashing for each conforming commercial use in R A district, which is, uh, that's recreational, isn't it? And what is the recreation again? Because there's R and there's R A, one's residential and one's recreational. But since it probably doesn't fit either one of those terms, you'd almost give them the commercial or industrial size just because it's not...
Yeah, no, I'd argue that it might.
Just in the test number four five, a lot of tests are...
So an R A is the recreational district, so that would be, that was the limit for recreational district, which we know it's not that. So I would say as long as it's under two hundred square feet, you're probably okay with that, I wish you. I guess we'll wait for the paperwork for number four. So, okay. Well, we got a half hour, the agenda is up to date until... So is everybody all ready for lunch, or do we want to just continue or?
You guys want to see that one application we received or not?
No, I would say not since it's still open, probably just wait, you know, wait until we're done, wait until it closes. Well, we only had the one agenda item after lunch, so we can either break for lunch and come back and discuss it, or we can discuss it now and go through lunch and just be done?
I think we should wait till after lunch.
Do you want to wait till after lunch? Is the people coming in or something?
There's some people coming in.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then, um, the only other thing that we didn't do is the, that utility permit for Ken Electric and so, and most guy who said there was no issue, so we did not. We'll make a, I need a
Motion.
Motion to approve table or deny the utility permit by Ken Electric. So it's over on, so it's from the intersection of Third Avenue Southwest and Ninetieth Street Southwest, traveling twenty-seven hundred and forty-five feet north along or on Third Avenue Southwest allocation, which came before Third Avenue Southwest from west to east. So, Scott didn't see any issues with it, so. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Holm makes motion to approve the permit, the utility permit for Ken Electric. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Culver. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Utility permit approved. And then the other thing is the road maintenance certification for county federally projects. Anybody want to review that?
It should be passed around.
Well, I think everybody got a copy of it, right? There was this copy here, but I had a copy of this, unless there's anyone that, anybody wants to review it? I believe we sign it every year, so I don't know if it's ever been started changing or not, but I want to look it over.
Joe, on these, um, county deeds, they have to be normalized, so I'm gonna sign them
No, Alan Lucin, I talked to Alan Lucin the other day, and he was wondering if we could dig some rocks out of the road this time here, I said, great for us. Yeah, I don't know if I get the sky, or those guys, they want to do that. I don't know if creating a hole in the road right now, it's like this, I do use, but I know there's some rock show that can do it.
Which part, too?
Yeah. Um, there's also a letter here, I don't think there's any action from it. It's from the Department of the Army Corps of Engineers and the state DOT. It looks like the DOT requested permission from the Army Corps of Engineers to do repair works on eighteen oh four bridges by, near Badger Bay and Beaver Bay. So it looks like, um, it's like there's gonna be some work going on both of those bridges here. Just for your information here, if you don't know. It's not a thing they have to sign anything, right? If you're getting instructions and DOT and Army Corps of Engineers, it's just information I want. Anybody here, anybody wants to look at it or?
We do have one thing, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but, yeah, sure, they got contacted by the mayor of Mowbridge, and we had a conversation. They're looking at putting a company jail in it, so I did it with Gary Sanders about it. And he was looking at, right now from us, if we would send a letter of support, because, you know, I thought they looking at the state, help pay for it. And if they get more communities involved, you know, I wouldn't make it look bad. So I talked to Gary Sanders about it. And I said, you know, we go up to Burley, and I goes, yeah. I said, how's that working out? And he said, great. He says, I said, you wouldn't have no interest if Mowbridge were there for, no, there's no way. He said, there would be a nightmare and everything else. And plus, what, and we speak with Selby, he said, we paid an arm and a leg to go down to Selby and stuff like that, and there's no, he said, uh...
For what's up for?
Huh?
For what's up for?
A jail.
Yeah, they want...
Out of prisoners and stuff.
They want to build a hole that's facilitated on their, very federal offenses and...
Yeah, and so I thought, I did bring it up, you know, I, I, you know, after talking to Gary, I'm, yeah, I'm totally against it too, so.
Yeah, I think, I think from what I've heard, the Burley Mowbridge detention center's been pretty good for us.
Right.
Of course, and, and that, so. Is there any?
Can we get the bills, can we get some of the bills?
Um, I don't know, are any of the bills ready? Probably not. Say if anything, we probably just recess for early lunch, but, um...
You didn't motion yet on that.
No, you need a motion to approve that federal maintenance agreement, right?
Before you sign it, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess we need a motion to either approve table or deny the, uh, signing of a federal maintenance agreement. Anybody have any issues or not? Entertain a motion? Okay, Commissioner Everly makes a motion to sign the federal aid maintenance agreement. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holm. Any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do you have, because there's multiple copies here, do you want, do you have a copy to sign? Because...
Pardon me?
Do you have a copy to sign?
No, that's mine, I passed it around, so if you want to sign that, bring that to me.
This one's a sample, and that doesn't...
Just the bad pages, right? Isn't there a second page just there?
So the second page right here, okay.
You guys have to all grab a calendar here for Wold Engineering.
Well, if there's no business before the board until after lunch, I'd say let's, uh, recess for early lunch, be back at twelve fifty? Right.